I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the Monday, November 3rd, 2025 Granville County Board of Commissioners meeting. As I've already announced, Commissioner Jay will not be with us tonight due to a medical condition. And I want to welcome everyone here. Thank you for coming. And with that, we'll go to our invocation and pledge of allegiance with Commissioner Timothy Karen.
Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Fathers, we come together this evening to conduct the business of Granville County. We pray that you be with us and guide our hearts and our minds and our decisions are pleasing your sight. Father, be with Commissioners of Lotus Jay. We know that he is a man that follows you, and you know what his needs are. Father, please be with him and comfort him as only you can. Father, I pray for those in our nation who are under this turmoil, that Father unite us. Father, I pray that you guide those people who are coming to you now as never before to ask, "What do I do? My government has failed me." Father, guide them to our churches and our sanctuaries, Father, to the people who follow you. Father, that's where the answer is. It is not with the government, Father. Father, I pray for those individuals who are suffering, who need assistance. Father, be with them. All these things I pray in your name. Amen. If you'd please stand with me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And any adjustments to the agenda? I have one. We've been asked to move item three from the consent agenda, and we're gonna move it back to the item 14 and add it to our county attorney's report. And other than that, I don't have any other adjustments. Does anyone have any adjustments or changes? Then we'll call for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Make a motion we approve?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a second in two places. Any discussion on the motion? Here none? We'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. Introductions, recognitions, and presentations. And our next item is introduction of the 2526 Granville County Youth Leadership Council. All right, how you doing? Oh, if you'll give me just a minute. I made a mistake. We need approval of the, a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I skipped over that, sorry.
A second.
We have a motion, a second. Do I hear any discussion on the motion? If not, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. And thank you, Karen. And I'm sorry.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us tonight. Tonight I'm excited to introduce the 2526 Granville County Youth Leadership Council. This group is excited to begin their work in the community through various community service projects, participation on community boards, team building, career skill building, and so much more. We appreciate the generous and dedicated partnership of the Granville County Board of Commissioners and Granville County Government. Without you, this project and its impact on our community would not be possible. A few couldn't attend tonight, so they are Kaylee Overby, Victoria Monroe, and Damian Smith, but they wanted me to tell y'all hey and that they're excited to be on the council. And then at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to the kids.
Good evening. My name is Claire Glaven. I live in Creedmore, and I'm excited to work with the youth of Granville County to make a real difference in our community.
Hello, my name is Kiana Evans, and I'm from Oxford, and I'm excited to be the change that Granville County needs.
Hello, my name is Enon Khan, and I'm from Creedmore, and I'm excited to contribute to making teens' mental health better.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Ely. I live in Wake Forest, and I'm excited to amplify youth voices through the council.
Hello, I'm Anna Black, and I'm from Oxford, and I'm happy to be an example for the youth in our community.
Hello, I'm Atlas Travis, and I'm from Butner, and I'm excited to connect our local youth with our local government.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joel Jost, and I'm from Oxford, and through this program, I hope to have a positive impact in my community.
Hello, my name is Olivia Smith. I live in Oxford, and I'm excited to be able to make a difference in the lives of our peers in this county.
Hello, my name is Grace Allred, and I live in Oxford, and I'm excited to be able to serve and impact all the youth in our community here.
Good evening. My name is Madison Thomerson. I live in Creedmore, North Carolina, and I am most excited to be able to work with fellow Granville County peers and our youth members.
Hello, I'm Zachary Machieski. I live in Oxford, North Carolina, and I'm excited to make North Carolina a better place, starting with Granville County.
Hello, good evening. I'm Logan Quintus. I'm from Creedmore. I'm excited to be a part of this council and make Granville County a better place with my fellow youth. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Sezakar Harley. I'm from Oxford, North Carolina, and I'm excited to have a positive impact on the youth in this community altogether.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Peyton Hyte, and I am just excited to be here and make an impact.
Thank you so much for all that you do with the youth.
Thank you for letting me do this job. I love this. And then, of course, we'll be back in the spring to let y'all know what we accomplished this year, so thank you so much.
Thank you. And thank you to all of our youth and their leadership and their commitment to public service. Thank you all. And now, our next item on our agenda is a proclamation recognizing November 2025 as Veterans and Military Families Appreciation Month. And and November is observed across the nation and locally as Veterans and Military Families Appreciation Month. And Veterans Affairs Chair David Sella is here front and center. Committee members Ann Williams and Lynn Yes, thank you. I know I was gonna butcher that, sorry. And Veterans Service Technician Danique Lamar. Danique Lamar. All right. And Russ May is our board liaison to the Veterans Affairs Committee, and he's at the podium, and Commissioner May has some remarks to make.
Mr. Chair, if you come around front, I'll be prepared to present the honor, please. I'd like to give you a brief history of Veterans Day. World War I, known as the time of the Great War, officially ended when the Treaty of Versailles was signed on June 28th, 1919, in the Palace of Versailles outside the town of Versailles, France. However, fighting ceased seven months earlier on armistice, or temporary cessation of hostilities between the Allied Nations and Germany, when in effect on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month. For this reason, November 11th, 1918, is generally regarded as the end of the war to end all wars. Veteran Day continues, Veterans Day continues to be observed on November 11th, regardless of the day of the week in which it falls. The restoration and observance of Veterans Day, November 11th, not only preserves the historical significance of this date, but helps focus attention on the important purpose of Veterans Day, a celebration to honor Americans veterans for their patriotism, love of country, and willingness to serve and sacrifice for the common good. There's no greater honor than to serve one's nation. We all get up each day. We should thank our God for those who have served and continue to serve. Their blanket of security has and does provide the protection, peace, liberties, and freedom and comfort you enjoy each day. God bless America and those who have honorably served our nation. Mr. And I'd like to introduce the folks on this stage briefly for their efforts in regards to how they serve our veterans. First of all, if there's any veteran here tonight, if you please stand. On behalf of the Granville County Board of Commissioners, thank you, and thank you for your service. David Sella, the chairman of our Veterans Services Board, Veterans Affairs. I call it Veterans Services, Veterans Affairs. Russ never gets it right. But it's an outstanding committee, a committee in which it funds itself, a committee that raises thousands of dollars a year on behalf of veterans and the service of veterans. It is an independent functioning body that serves for the Board of Commissioners, but they do a remarkable job in the way they relate with our veterans services. A.J. Spees is in charge of Veterans Services, and I will introduce Danique here in a second. David served in the United States Coast Guard, and he proudly served for, I think, 25 years and retired as commander. Thank you for captain. That's important. That's equal to a colonel. So thank you for your service. Ann Williams has served, Ann, has served on the Veterans Affairs Committee since 2015. She became involved in veterans issues during her 25-year career with Local Mental Health Agency, where she noticed an increase in assistance requests for the veterans after discharge from the military. Assisting veterans has become a passion and priority for her during her employment and since her retirement. Ann, thank you. Lynn Bruxfire, and I always get that wrong, but Lynn, has served on the Veterans Affairs Committee since 2018. She is passionate and dedicated to what she does. Lynn comes from a military family as her husband served in the United States Army, her brother served in the United States Air Force, and her uncle served in World War II. Lynn is constantly working on behalf of our veterans, as is Ann, and incredibly what they do, and because of them, that committee thrives, and we appreciate what they do. Danique Lamar, our Veterans Service Technician, my humble brother, served 18 months in Iraq, deployed. A true man. A man that has my great admiration. Thank you for your service, Lamar. At this time, Commissioner Gooch, I'd like to recognize Commissioner Karen, who is also a veteran, and I too am a veteran. We are proud of our service and our commitment to our country. It's everlasting. Thank you each for what you've done for our country. I hope this small token of appreciation tonight will demonstrate not only to you, but to the citizens of Granville County that we care about our veterans. You know, veterans die hourly from suicide in our nation. It's the deep care and compassion that we have for these veterans that we have a number of programs initiated to help those veterans in times of need. Thank you for what you do. Now, Mr. Chairman, if you would.
Across the United States, a time to recognize and honor the families who stand beside our service members and contribute to the strength and readiness of our armed forces. And whereas our brave servicemen and women of Granville County, their families, and their loved ones have demonstrated extraordinary resilience, adaptability, and courage as they face the unique challenges of military life, including deployments, relocations, and separations. Granville County is proud to be home of more than 4,000 veterans and their families whose commitment and sacrifice strengthen the fabric of our community and exemplify the values of service, honor, and dedication. And the support of these families is essential to the service, to the success of our men and women in uniform, providing them with the stability and encouragement needed to fulfill their duties at home and abroad. And during Veterans and Military Families Appreciation Month and throughout the year, we recognize our Granville County service members, veterans, and military families, and remember with deep gratitude the men and women who have given their lives in defense of our freedom. Now therefore, the Granville County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim November 2025 as Veteran and Military Families Appreciation Month in Granville County, North Carolina, and commend its observance to all citizens. This the third day of November 2025. Yes. Commissioner Griffin, Russ and Tim, will you come forward? Commissioner Griffin has a presentation for you.
Thank you, Chairman Gooch. Many of you may not know, I worked for the United States Postal Service 35 years, and every year on Veterans Day, we always doing something for our veterans. And since I'm retired, man, and no longer with that organization, I'd like to carry on that tradition here with this new boy that I am on. Each year, the Postal Service comes out with commemorative stamps that celebrate some different things in the communities and organizations. And this year, they came out with a special stamp celebrating the 250th anniversary of the United States Army. With that being said, today, on behalf of my board here in the Commissioners of Granville County, I would like to offer a small token of our appreciation to both these gentlemen here. Just to say, I appreciate you.
And Commissioner Griffin, we thank you, thank you for your thoughtfulness in doing this. We appreciate you doing this.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your time, Commissioner.
Okay, now, our next item on our agenda is public comments. And this is an opportunity for any of the public who wants to speak, to speak. And we have two people signed up tonight. Mr. Jerry Edmonds, if you will come forward, state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jerry Edmonds, and I serve as the Vice President of Workforce and Community Engagement at Van Scrabble Community College. I'm speaking on behalf of Van Scrabble Community College, perhaps the greatest community college in the world, I might add. But I'm speaking on behalf of them, and the address is 200 College Drive in Henderson, North Carolina. So the purpose of my standing today is in support of the longstanding partnership and collaboration between Duke Energy and Van Scrabble Community College. I'm not here to speak regarding the solar land ordinances or any other topics pertaining to projects that are outside of the purview of Van Scrabble Community College. Several years ago, Van Scrabble Community College was informed by Duke Energy of their desire to assist North Carolina community colleges, so the entire 58 community colleges that make up the North Carolina Community College system. And they pledged to devote resources to helping short-term training and other student resources within the state. That was their pledge. They came through with that pledge. Several months later, they made good on their commitment with a $35 million investment in North Carolina's community colleges that focused on technical education and support of business and industry. And specifically here in our own communities, Van Scrabble Community College was awarded almost $200,000 towards that initiative and towards our Business and Industry Connect, which is a program that allowed the college to purchase equipment and also to provide tuition support for our students. That was germane and key to a lot of the short-term programs that you see within Van Scrabble Community College at this point in time. And then finally, I wanted to point out the fact that Duke Energy has assisted Van Scrabble Community College with starting several key apprenticeship programs. One being our Early Childhood Education Program, another in information technology, a third in human resources, and one in bioprocessing, which is a pre-apprenticeship which prepares our students to be apprentices in some of the other, in bioprocessing, as I stated before. So in summary, I just stand to say that Duke Energy has been a trusted partner of Van Scrabble Community College for many years, and they're helping us train the workforce of tomorrow today. Thank you.
Thank you. And, okay, Mr. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Stephanie Allen. And if you will, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Allen. My husband, Bill Allen, and I live at 2126 Highway 96 in Creedmore, North Carolina. We have two boys that are thriving at Wilton Elementary School, and I'm here to talk to you guys about the closure of Wilton Elementary School. I know you don't control the vote of whether Wilton closes, but this group does control how and when our tax dollars are allocated to public schools. I greatly appreciate this board's commitment to investing in our district and to create safe and updated learning environments. However, I fear the Board of Education is focused on short-term savings, and no one is anticipating the long-term financial impacts closing Wilton will have on this district. Tomorrow, Ms. Hines will provide a financial update at the board meeting. It's gonna predict a $2.8 million loss in funding next year because we had 450 kids leave Granville County public schools. The projected savings from closing Butner St. Middle and Granville Central High were around $2 million. So the loss of 450 kids because of all that shuffling and closing and reassignment led to more than $800,000 loss. There will be no gains. I'm concerned closing Wilton will result in the same. More kids leaving and a reduction in funding greater than any savings we may see by closing a school. Based on a Wilton PTO poll, we think 90 families would leave, would take their children and leave Granville County public schools to find alternatives. That's gonna be a $550,000 reduction, completely offsetting the short-term savings of closing Wilton. Of our seven elementary schools, five of them have higher capital outlay needs than Wilton, okay? And of those five, two have already received over $1 million in funding since 2021. Wilton has received $42,000. That's it. So while the closure studies mention a new roof and fencing needs, the school system has been neglecting the critical outlay needs at Wilton while they invest in other schools. I'm asking this group to support Wilton because any dollar spent at Wilton is a good investment. It's one of the few schools actually seeing stability and slight growth in enrollment numbers. It's a thriving, high-performing leader in me school that has met or exceeded academic growth for over nine years, and is currently at the highest capacity of all the elementary schools. Because people want to go here. They want to go to Wilton. Wilton has the lowest chronic absenteeism rate than any other school in Granville County public schools. So parents want their kids to go to Wilton, and students want to show up every day, and almost 100 families are choosing Wilton over their districted school. So please stand with Wilton families and support a plan that strengthens, not shrinks, our district's future. Tonight, I'm asking you, our county commissioners, to use your influence and your partnership role with the Board of Education. Urge them to stop the agenda of closing Wilton. Instead, collaborate on solutions that preserve fiscal responsibility and educational excellence. It's not just about one school, but protecting our enrollment base, our funding stability, and our community's faith in public education. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. And our next item on our agenda is a public hearing on Economic Development Expansion Award to Dill Air Control Products. And Ms. Charlotte Duncan, I'm gonna go ahead and declare the public hearing open, and if you will, give us some background and...
Sure, great. Good evening. Dill Air Controls Products is a company located just outside of the city of Oxford, City Limits. The company was founded in 1909. They've been in Oxford for the last 20 years. Previously, they were in Roxborough for 40 years. So the Dill sits on, the site itself right now is about 22 acres. Their building is about 147,000 square feet. As I stated earlier, they are located in Oxford's ETJ, but they are not actually located in their taxing district. They are located mostly in District 2 with a small corner of the back lot in District 4. They currently have 182 employees, and their average salary is over $23 an hour. I am bringing forward tonight the proposal that we award Dill a local grant for an expansion that they are planning. The company is planning to construct an additional roughly 20,000 square feet, an expansion of their existing business footprint, building footprint. The projected capital investment is approximately $4.5 million in building expansion and renovation costs, and about $2.5 million in new machinery for that expansion. They will be starting up a new product line. The total grant proposed tonight is estimated to be $25,799 and will not exceed 65% of the avalorum tax revenues that are generated by expenditures that the company makes for real and personal property at that site. And real and personal property that would be subject to the tax here in Granville County. This is a one-year grant only, and it will be based on the avalorum taxes paid on the improvements related to the project. The actual grant amount may vary due to the actual tax revenues generated, but with the projected capital investment at 65% of avalorum tax files, that is where we get that total maximum grant of $25,799. Again, just a one-year grant. The county will fund the payments with available revenues in our county's general fund. I will pause there. Or I guess take questions now or after the public hearing.
Any questions? Okay, and no one signed up from the audience for public comments? Suppose we don't have anyone speaking for or against this? I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. And now, what is the pleasure of the board? The recommendation is the Economic Development Director recommends approval of the proposed economic development incentive grant and authorization of the county manager and county attorney to finalize and execute an economic development incentive agreement with Dill Air Control Products, LLC, co-existent with the terms described above. Do I hear a motion from the...
Mr. Chairman, I'll be glad to make the motion that we fund the grant, the local grant to Dill Air Controls.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Here none? We'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
And our next matter is Sheriff Matters, and it's, okay, and it's authorization for medical retirement and transfer ownership of K-9 Kelfer, is that correct? To Deputy Handler. And this is on page 47 of our agenda.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Lieutenant Mark Harrison with the Granville County Sheriff's Office. Sheriff Fountain couldn't make it tonight, so I'm here on his behalf. The purpose to request authorization to transfer ownership... The purpose, to request authorization to transfer ownership of retired K-9 to Deputy Handler. Little background, the Granville County Sheriff's Office is requesting authorization to transfer the ownership of a retired K-9 asset to the Deputy Handler. The transfer of ownership will be processed at a fee of $1, and the proceeds will be deposited into the sheriff's special account. This request meets guidelines as outlined in North Carolina General Statute 17F-21. On September 29, 2025, K-9 Kepper, a three-year-old German Shepherd, was evaluated by the Wake Forest Animal Hospital veterinarian, Andrew Sparks, and diagnosed with immune-mediated polyarthritis, is that correct?
Polyarthritis.
Polyarthritis. As a result of this medical condition, K-9 Kepper is prone to joint inflammation that is triggered by strenuous exercise. It is the recommendation of DVM Sparks that K-9 Kepper retire from her work with the Granville County Sheriff's Office in the best interest of the animal's long-term comfort and management of her condition, as well as the inability to consistently perform her law enforcement duties. Based on a medical recommendation, Sheriff Fountain has retired K-9 Kepper from active service. Sergeant Jordan has requested by memorandum to assume ownership and responsibility for K-9 Kepper. Upon approval of the transfer of ownership by the board, a memorandum of understanding and agreement will be executed by Sheriff Fountain, County Manager Cummings, and Sergeant Madison to memorize the transfer of ownership and responsibility of K-9 Kepper. And if y'all are loud, Sergeant Jordan has an impact statement, if that's okay.
Yes, please, please go ahead.
Yes, sir, I appreciate it. So obviously, because she can't speak for herself, and I feel like I would be doing a complete disservice, regards to her for not speaking on her behalf. As Lieutenant Harrison stated, my name is Sergeant Jordan with the Granville County Sheriff's Office. For the past few years, I had the absolute privilege of being partner with K-9 Kepper as our first and only handler. We were partnered together in the middle of October '22 and officially became a certified team on November 3, 2022. And on that day, she has been so much more than a working dog. She has been my partner, my protector, and my best friend. On February 6, 2025, Kepper had a stay at NC State for two nights and three days due to difficulty walking, even picking up her head, along with showing signs of soreness and stiffness in her joints. After her vet visit and test, she was diagnosed with immune-mutated polyarthritis and suspected to be a component of SLE, which is a condition that causes painful inflammation in her joints, especially after strenuous activities or vaccinations. Seeing her go through this has not only been tough, but has been a toll that takes on with her physically. But because she's always given 110% without hesitation, Kepper has taught me what true loyalty, dedication, and selflessness looks like. She has shown up every day, ready to work, protect, and serve, no matter what was asked of her. I've made the very difficult decision to step away from the Granville County K-9 unit so another deputy can have an incredible experience that I have been honored with. Kepper deserves a chance to live out her retirement comfortably, to just be a dog, to play, relax, and enjoy her days without the physical strain that comes with the duty of a working dog. In this case, I want to thank everybody at the Granville County Sheriff's Office, as well as the Board of Commissioners for supporting this possible decision and allowing K-9 Kepper to retire with the honor and dignity that she deserves. It means the world to know that she'll be able to live the rest of her life happy, comfortable, and loved.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, anyone have any questions?
I do regarding the K-9 program, but not regarding this matter. I make a motion we approve this matter.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Here none, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries, and wish you the best of luck in Karen. And I believe this is a German Shepherd?
Yes, sir.
Is it in the, more in the hindquarters?
No, she's, she's only three, so...
You talking about where the flare-up...
Arthritis, yeah.
So, so it's a, one of those things where it's treated with a very strong steroid, a four-week steroid, which takes her out of work for six weeks total at a time, anytime she has a flare-up. Since February, when she was diagnosed with the autoimmune mutated polyarthritis, she's been out of work two or three times, just being put on that steroid. The steroid hinders her sense of smell during that period of time, just because of how strong the steroid is. But with her having the strenuous work, like, I think when it comes to K-9 training every two weeks, on top of any type of call-out or track that we may have encountered, has been repetitively flaring up in the past year.
And the flare-ups could occur anywhere.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And again, I wish you and K-9 Kepper the, all the best.
Thank you, sir.
Hope she has a long life with you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask some questions, separate from this item? This, as long as K-9s. Good evening, Lieutenant. How many K-9s do we have?
Excuse me, let me write, write it down for a second. So currently, with the exception of Kepper 6.
So six that are active even after, if I don't get this right, her retirement?
Yes, sir.
Six, okay. How's that, how are they dispersed?
You have some that are throughout different divisions, like myself, I have one. And so, you know, on Monday through Friday, but I still, you know, if I get a call-out, most of the time I'm available, so that's handled. And we got a couple within the narcotics division, so it's, it's spread out.
My final question, Mr. Chairs. What, you have, your dogs, how are they classified? Narcotics?
Narcotics, tracking.
Tracking?
Yes, sir. Article.
Right, how many in each?
How many in each? Every dog is dual. We don't have no single purpose at this time.
And how many narcotics dogs?
Everyone is narcotics.
Narcotics?
Yes, sir.
And tracker?
Everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you. Any, any, no further questions?
No, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for volunteering to make sure that Kepper has a, a good life. Thank you. All right, and our next item of business is Developmental Service Matters, as this is approval of contract for asbestos abatement and demolition at the former G.C. Hawley Middle School site. All right. Good evening, Scott, how are you doing?
Doing good. Commissioner Gooch, Granville County Commissioners, thank you. Of course, this is considered a warrant of fixed-price construction service agreement for asbestos abatement, removal of three underground fuel storage tanks, and general building demolition for the former G.C. Hawley Middle School located at 2173 Brassfield Road in Creedmore. The former G.C. Hawley Middle School requires demolition to prepare for a future recreational park. Prior to demolition, the historical, historical elements identified by the Granville County, by Granville County's Hawley Alumni Association will be removed by the Granville County Maintenance Staff and preserved for future use. The G.C. Hawley property was conveyed to the county in June of 2024. Soon after conveyance, the county began an environmental survey as part of the demolition plan. The assessment survey indicated significant asbestos contamination throughout many of the buildings, as well as three underground fuel storage tanks. As a result of the findings, our consultants provided remediation plans for removal, which are part of the project's bid documents. On Tuesday, October 21, the Granville County received bid submittals for the work scope described within the bid documents. We received nine submittals, ranging from $648,000 being the lowest to $1,414,000 being the highest. I think the average bid price is about 1.1. So you can see by the lowest price, it was a good day to bid demolition work. This procedure is in accordance with Section 1 Formal Bids of the Granville County Contract and Purchasing Policy. Funding for this request is available within our approved project ordinance, and it's my recommendation that we award, that the Board of Commissioners award the fixed-price construction service contracts to D.H. Griffin Wrecking Company Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $648,000 for asbestos abatement, removal of three underground fuel storage tanks, and the demolition of the former G.C. Hawley Middle School. We request that the board authorizes the county attorney to finalize the contract and for the county manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the county and approve $35,000 in contingency funding to be added to the project budget to cover any unforeseen conditions that may arise during the course of the work. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question.
Yes.
Or two, actually. Mr. Phillips, when the, once the, it is awarded, when do they plan on starting, and how long is the length of this project expected to last?
They're ready to start the 1st of December.
Okay.
You know, based on contract execution. I think the contract is 160 days.
Is there a length of time that they have to have it done within?
160 days.
That's, okay.
Anyone else have any questions? Not hearing any questions, so what's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion we approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Is there any questions on the motion? Here none, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our next item on our agenda is Planning Matters, and this is the legislative hearing Duke Energy on Saddle White Road rezoning. And the purpose of this legislative hearing is to receive public comments regarding the rezoning requests submitted by Duke Energy Progress LLC for three tracks located on Saddle White Road. The request seeks to rezone the properties from agricultural residential 40, AR-40, to agricultural support enterprises conditional zoning District ASE-CZ to allow development of a ground-mounted solar farm. And before I declare this public hearing open, we just want to give everybody a heads-up in advance. This is in District 1, which is, Commissioner's, the Lotus J's District, and we're not likely to make a decision tonight. We will, we will leave the hearing open. You can make comments tonight, speak, you know, during the, during the public hearing, in the legislative hearing, you can make comments tonight. Also, when it comes back up, if we do continue it, you will be able to make comments then also. We didn't anticipate Commissioner Jay being sick, and like I stated earlier, I think this is the first time in 29 years or so that he's missed a meeting, so we're, I'm extremely concerned of his health. But with that, I will declare the public hearing open, and at this time, I'd like to recognize Barry Baker, our Planning Director, for a brief overview. And thank you, Mr. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, the chairman has done a synopsis of the hearing. It is to conduct a legislative hearing to consider the rezoning request from Duke Energy, the three tracks located on Saddle White Road from AR-40 to Agricultural Support Conditional Use District. It is for the purpose to allow the development of a ground-mounted solar farm. Want to state that all public notices as required by local and state law have been accomplished for tonight's hearing. The planning board held a public hearing on August 21, and by a 4-1 vote, recommended denial of the reza, rezoning, excuse me. This is property owned by Henry Thorpe Jr. and Mary Thorpe and others, and as you will see the tax map numbers and references, there are three tracks. They propose a conditional zoning district that would be used for the purpose of ground-mounted solar energy, a solar farm. A site plan illustrating the proposed layout is in your agenda material. You will find in the site plans a Zone 1 and a Zone 2. They propose in Zone 1 that the site plans will be controlled by Duke Energy and include all setbacks, vegetative buffers, fencing, and improvements associated with the solar facility. All land in Zone 1 where the zoning site plan does not show improvements will remain undisturbed unless removal of selected material is necessary for safety. Zone 2 on the site plans will be reserved by the current property owner to have the right to timber. Also of significance, the applicant proposed to install fencing that will allow small animals to be able to go underneath the fencing. This was of recommendation from the Development Review Committee. The fencing will not have green slats, which the ordinance states are required. The fence shall be a chain-link fence, would not have dark green slats, and our, and it does state in the, in the ordinance that during, after the public hearing, that other fencing materials may be approved during the rezoning process to provide at least as much screening and safety as the chain-link fence with slats, and the applicant will go over that, as they did at the planning board. These are the three tracks. They are approximately 487 acres off of Saddle White Road. That is the proposed layout. You will see some areas that are to be left as riparian buffers with creeks that run through them. Those are the light yellow, light green color. The blue is the solar field, solar panel field. You will see this map illustrating Zone 1 and Zone 2. Again, Zone 1 would be controlled by Duke Energy. It is roughly 150 feet off of Saddle White of a vegetative buffer with a minimum of 35 feet along all other perimeter property lines. The planning board's written consistency statement. Again, the planning board voted to recommend denial of the rezoning application 4-1 with one member not voting. Their written consistency statement is that the rezoning application is inconsistent with the county's comprehensive plan, specifically its primary goal to preserve the rural character, conserve agricultural resources, and protect environmentally sensitive areas. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any of our commissioners have questions for Mr. Baker?
I have.
Okay.
Mr. Baker, please define agricultural support enterprises.
Well, agricultural support enterprises is in our ordinance. It's the only conditional zoning district. It is different from our other zoning districts, which are general use zoning, where if it's AR-40 is a general use zone, it has a number of permitted uses, special uses that can go there. In a, in an agricultural support enterprise zoning district, you can, the commissioners can look at a site plan. It can be, allow for one or more uses that are in that, defined in agricultural support. In this instance, the only use that would go there if approved would be a solar farm. Agricultural Support Enterprise is, that zoning district was created in the middle of the last decade.
So as my understanding, it was created in 2015, and it was created to support agriculture, to supplement agriculture, yes. Okay. And, and I'm still agriculture in regards to revenue, in regards to the farming operation? Again, am I correct?
That's right, to supplement agricultural pursuits, property owners that derive income from agricultural products, livestock.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Here are none, we'll go to, uh, uh, we've had a, uh, we'll first hear from those in support of the proposed rezoning, and then it will follow by those in opposition. Those who are here in support of the, of the rezoning, uh, please come forward. If you will, for the record, state your name and address.
Good evening. Yes, my name is Norman Thorpe, and, um, I want to thank, uh, Chairman Gooch and the members of the board and staff, and also the Duke team for, they wanted me to go first, and, um, I appreciate that. I was asked to address this matter, um, from the landowner's perspective, and, um, so I'm gonna take some time here and address this issue from that perspective. These properties are owned by myself, um, my father, Henry, and my sister, Ellen. Two of the tracts have been in the family two-hundred-plus years, and since the nineteen-thirties, they've had a power line running across them. Um, my ninety-three-year-old dad has, can't remember a time when it was ever formed or was open land. Excuse me. Approximately ten years ago, we started getting contacts by various solar developers, most of them startup LLCs, I mean, literally from all over the country. If you're a citizen of this county and have power line property, you probably understand that. And, um, over time, after studying the matter, that seeing that these companies didn't have any assets, no proven track records, we decided and were reluctant to sign off on this Arizona LLC, Mississippi, Louisiana, where it may be. And, um, I figured that Duke Energy probably knew where they needed and wanted a site, and, um, I thought giving up the property rights was too risky, because as a lawyer, I know that an LLC will dissolve, and then you have to go to court to quiet title to the property, or some nuisance or another, some aggravation I didn't want. And, um, so anyway, about a year and a half ago, we were contacted by Duke Energy, the Duke Energy, and they advised me that they wanted to build out its own solar project, start to finish, and operate. Um, the Duke team's, of course, gonna give you the particulars exactly how that's gonna play out. Um, I believe the project will be state-of-the-art and a benefit to Granville County. None of my citizens, or our citizens, are gonna hear it, see it, or smell it. This site's gonna quietly gather energy and add it to the grid, and no burdens or services will be required of the county. Um, in the process of their presentation, they're gonna point out my family's, extended families', um, commitment to conservation by being shown and adjoining the tracts owned by Martha and Wolf, um, by my recently deceased Aunt Jane. My dad and my sister and I have been converted to committed easements to Tar River Land Conservancies to protect the headwaters of Tar River, namely Shelton Creek and Fox Creek. And I do believe and enthusiastic about this project actually fur, furthering conservation efforts. Um, I tell you, by nature, good farmers conserve the soil, conserve the water, and conserve the land itself. The young people I've worked with in talking about this project, um, are excited about creating pollinization zones for birds, um, and insects and bees, uh, to thrive. Particularly, we're gonna use native grasses and lagoons for ground nesting birds, such as larks and bob white quail, which people who know me know I love bob white quail. And so, at my age, I'm looking forward to, uh, projects such as this. I guess it probably started for me when I was seven years old, and my dear mother got me the Ranger Rick Children's Magazine. I imagine some people here remember that, and I thought that was the finest thing, once a month, come in the mail with my name on it. And, um, since that time, I've always been interested in nature and all creatures. My son, David, who's with me tonight, um, this project is set to decommission in thirty-five years, which, give or take a few years, will be, he'll be the age I am now. Um, I won't live to see it, assuming it goes that full-time, but, um, I think he and his cousins will take possession of a partially cleared, meta-type land with improved soil and a lot of promise. Um, I know they'll clean up the site, they're a big company, there'll also be a performance bond that's in the lease and so forth, that they'll take the aluminum, glass, and whatever, most items, probably having a phone. Um, I intend to use my part of the lease proceeds to carry on, improve our home place, carry on our cow-calf operation, and make improvements, and maybe hang, hang on to other properties that, um, we own. I mean, any ag or ranch that is up and down. I know cattle prices per pound were down twenty-five cent last week. They'll do this and so forth. Um, the tax angle, the project's gonna generate substantial tax revenue for the county, and Duke will have those figures, and, and the way I look at it, really, the county's a solid partner. Um, over time, if they have a battery, um, with an annual hundred and twenty-six thousand, give or take, uh, tax bill, um, they're gonna be about equal to what I'll see out of it, because my part will be taxed at forty percent ordinary income for federal and state taxes. Um, I just ask that you give the project thoughtful and considerate, serious consideration. I'd ask you to take particular notice, the planning board member, Blaine Holmes, and the record he made at the planning board meeting and voting for the project. I'll be frank, me and, as we say in Granville County, I've looked at upside one side and all the way down the other, and I can't see a good reason to deny this project, much less several. Um, and finishing up, next month, I'm gonna walk down to the, uh, tax office, as I do every year in December. I'm gonna pay the taxes on these tracts and others. Now, the nice staff down there is gonna help me go through and make sure I pay everything that's owed, including cemeteries and whatever, because I was always taught, you pay your taxes on time when you can, and, uh, so you stay out of the paper in February. And, um, I just don't wanna go there, walk down there and do that, and think that my property rights are nothing but an illusion. So, um, anybody have any questions for me, or concerns? I'm glad to try to answer them. If not, I thank you, and I leave it to these professionals to go on with the particulars. I do want to thank, I don't know if they're here tonight, um, several friends, Crawford Knott, Lenny Blackley, Ernie Avery, and, and Aunt Myers, who have given me good counsel, and it's appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And now, anyone else wishing to speak on behalf, in support of?
Good evening, all. I'm Jennifer Cofalo, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Granville County Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to take a moment to express our strong support for Duke Energy and the positive role that they play as a partner in our community, not only here in Granville County, but across the region. Over the years, Duke Energy has supported numerous, um, chamber programs and helped with, with community initiatives. They've invested in our local nonprofits, helped strengthen our community college programs, and consistently shown up as a partner when our community has needed it the most. They are a company that leads with professionalism and purpose, and their commitment extends beyond the work that they do in energy and infrastructure. It's about the people. A wonderful example of this can be seen through Beth Townsend herself, who is currently a part of our Leadership Granville Program, Class of 2025. Beth has been instrumental in helping her classmates address food insecurity throughout the county. She has personally challenged other companies to join in the fundraising efforts that match Duke Energy's donations, multiplying the impact for the local families in need. So as you consider their proposal, I hope you'll also consider their strong rapport of community engagement and partnership. They're not just investing in infrastructure, but they're investing in the people and in the future of Granville County. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing, wishing to speak?
Good evening. Would you like us to move forward with our full presentation about the project?
Uh, yes, if you will, for the record, state your name.
Absolutely.
And address.
My name is Beth Townsend. I am with Duke Energy, and, uh, my address, my office address is twenty-five Burlington Road in Roxborough, North Carolina. Thank you. So as the government and community relations manager for Granville County, I am excited to talk to you about the proposed project that we have, the Granville Solar Center. And hopefully, I will do this right. Duke Energy is tasked with meeting the rising electricity demand across the Carolinas. It's a demand that is driven by economic success in North Carolina and in South Carolina. We're working to meet these future energy needs across our service area with a diverse energy mix and a modern electric grid designed to protect reliability and keep the cost as low as possible for our customers. Across the Carolinas, customer energy needs over the next fifteen years are expected to grow at eight times the growth rate of the prior fifteen years, as shown in this diagram here. In fact, over the next decade, Duke Energy will need to match the infrastructure built over the last fifty years. So just let that sink in for a second. Over the next ten years, we need to build what we built over the last fifty, to match the needs that are needed in our states. As we plan for this future, our focus remains on delivering reliable service to our customers and our communities, no matter what their demands are, and the bottom line is that we need your help. So how does Granville County fit into this equation? Duke Energy is proposing the Granville Solar Center that will provide seventy-five megawatts of clean renewable energy and potentially twenty-seven megawatts of energy storage. You will hear in this presentation how the project will support county needs with significant tax revenue, along with economic benefits resulting from workforce opportunity throughout the construction phase. This project will also preserve land for future agricultural use, and while the project is in place, we will partner with local entities to maintain a positive environmental atmosphere. The Granville Solar Center will improve the overall, overall reliability of the North Carolina electric grid, and that is one of the most important pieces of the puzzle. Here is Colin Welch, a renewables expert, to tell you more about the specific project, and then I'll follow up with a few additional comments.
Yep. Yep, thanks, Beth. My name is Colin Welch, and my business address is four-one-one Fayetteville Street, Raleigh, North Carolina. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for your time today. Uh, I'm Colin Welch, the lead developer of this project for Duke Energy, and as I'm going, feel free to stop me and ask questions, um, or if you want, hold them to the end. Uh, so our proposal is to rezone three isolated parcels currently designated AR forty into AS, ASE-CZ, the conditional zoning district where solar is a permitted use in the Granville County ordinance, for the construction of a solar farm and potentially a battery energy storage system. The Granville Solar System, Solar Center is located in the northwest corner of the county, as marked by the yellow star on the screen. Oh, actually, we do have, uh, slides for y'all if you need, um, to look more closely at this, but if the screens work, we can continue with that.
They've got most of the slides, most of the graphics in there?
They have changed a little bit since the planning board, but I wanted to throw that out there. If the slides work, then I'll continue. Uh, so as I said, the Granville Solar Center, Solar Center is located in the northwest corner of the county, as marked by the yellow star in the image to the right, and it's on contiguous land owned by the Thorpe family and leased to Duke Energy. It's worth mentioning that this project will not take away from local agricultural production because it has been entirely wooded for the last hundred years or so. So a little bit about the project. As I said, it's located along Satterwhite Road, which is the red line in the top image, and it's between two existing utility transmission corridors, the two orange lines. The project boundary is in pink in that top image. With your approval, Duke Energy plans to construct, own, and operate a seventy-five-megawatt solar farm using solar photovoltaic panels and a potentially a twenty-seven-megawatt battery. If all goes well, the project will begin construction at the end of 2029, will be placed into service at the end of 2030, and will have a thirty-five-year operating period. Now, when Duke Energy cites solar projects, we look for three main things. Number one is proximity to transmission lines. We want this proximity to avoid building new expensive transmission lines. We could not build, build the bulk electric system that we have today, uh, so quickly and cheaply as we did back in the day. Number two is large, flat, dry land for constructability purposes. And number three, we look for a location away from other types of development to be respectful of and compatible with the surrounding area. This project checks each of those boxes, making it ideally located. It's between two existing overhead electrical transmission corridors, which is good for interconnection. It's on three contiguous parcels, large contiguous parcels with the characteristics we look for, and it's largely isolated, with very few nearby residences, only one nearby public road, and very little other development in the vicinity. Lastly, though, and maybe most importantly, we need willing landowners, like the Thorps, to work with. Without willing landowners, no development of any kind is possible. All right, so this is the zoning map we submitted with our application, and I want to spend the next few minutes going through how it has been tailored specifically for Granville County. To orient everyone again, Satterwhite Road is the red line running across the top of the map, and the two transmission lines are in orange. The transmission line going through the top of the site is where we will connect the project to the grid. Now, around the whole site, we have included a one-hundred-and-fifty-foot-wide setback for all solar equipment, which is fifty percent in excess of county requirements, a thirty-five-foot-wide undisturbed vegetative buffer around the entire perimeter of the site, which is forty percent in excess of county requirements, a one-hundred-and-fifty-foot undisturbed vegetative buffer, or half a football field's worth of native pine trees along Satterwhite Road to prevent any viewshed impacts. Again, that is the only public road in the, in the vicinity. We also have a hundred-foot setbacks for all fences and fifty-foot setbacks from all water features within the site. But beyond increased setbacks in buffers, we've also incorporated two other items of importance to Granville County, wildlife corridors and animal-friendly fencing. The wildlife corridors are the tan areas that run through the site. These will remain as open, undisturbed spaces to ensure that wildlife will not be cut off from their water sources. And animal-friendly fencing was another county priority we have put into our design. But to accommodate this request, we are proposing an alternative fence design. from their water sources. And animal-friendly fencing was another county priority we have put into our design. But to accommodate this request, we are proposing an alternative fence design, as Mr. Baker stated earlier. The fence will still be 10 feet tall, as per the ordinance, but instead of using green slats, which are used to block the viewshed of the development, we're requesting to use fencing with larger chain link holes to allow for small wildlife to move unimpeded through the site. We think our alternate design is reasonable because the green slats are to hide the development from view, and we will still achieve this because of the 150-foot vegetative buffer along Satterwhite Road, hundreds of feet of distance, the entire transmission corridor, and all of that lies between Satterwhite Road and our proposed development area. Finally, on this slide, I do want to call your attention to the four yellow stars at the top of the map. These are the only nearby residences, the closest of which will be more than two football fields away, or more, about 700 feet from any solar equipment. The other residences are, on average, more than three football fields away, or 1,000 feet. But a picture is, you know, a picture paints a thousand words, and we've had some visual renderings done to show what the project will look like from the vantage point of those nearby residences. Kimley Horn, an independent engineering firm, put these renderings together on behalf of the project to show what, in their professional opinion, the site will look like from multiple locations. So there's three locations here looking south across Satterwhite Road toward the project. Each location will show four pictures, one in the top right of current conditions from photos that Kimley Horn engineers took this October, and then images at one, three, and five years after installation. As you can see from location number one, there is a Duke Energy sign and entrance gate, along with our 150-foot native pine buffer, totally obscuring the fact that there's a solar farm behind it. The land also slopes downward and away from the road, which helps hide it even further. Location two is a little further west on Satterwhite, but the project is equally obscured. Location three is the farthest west along Satterwhite Road and much further away from the development area. There's some other parcels in between, and again, the project would be totally obscured. We did not have any winter renderings because this is a pine buffer of evergreens that won't shed their needles in, they'll shed their needles across the year as opposed to just in the winter. Lastly, we had a comparison rendered to show what our project with its proposed 150-foot pine buffer, the top image, looks like versus a hypothetical clear-cut version of the property, which is on the bottom of, and those few early, few front trees are in the North Carolina DOT easement. Okay, so we've seen now what the site will look like with a large vegetative buffer, but what can we expect during construction? Construction usually takes 12 months, but can extend to 18 months if there are delays. At peak activity, around month six, we expect about 125 employees to be on site. They work during daylight hours with occasional weekend work to maintain schedule, and the work includes site clearing, the stumping and grubbing of the site, road construction, solar equipment installation, stormwater and erosion control, and testing and commissioning, to name a few. Standard trucks will deliver materials, think gravel, the panels, the steel for the racking, et cetera, and we use water trucks for dust management. The site entrance is designed to minimize impacts to local traffic, but traffic does increase during peak construction. Now, noise is unavoidable during construction, but luckily, it's also temporary. Pile drivers, dump truck beds, and heavy equipment all make noise, but the site will comply with local noise ordinances and maintain buffers from the edge of the property to lessen the noise to adjacent parcels. And once complete, noise from solar is negligible. During and after construction, the Granville Solar Center will create a flurry of economic activity. Specifically, our team estimates that the project's annual tax revenues will be between $86,000 and $121,000, the larger amount meaning that the project is built with a battery energy storage system. This solar plus storage tax revenue is more than 30 times higher the property's current use as timberland, and over the project's useful life, it will bring more than $4.2 million into, in tax revenue to the county. This is a stable and predictable annual revenue stream that comes with no additional strain on county resources and can, in fact, support county priorities like schools. As a part of our normal due diligence process, we had third-party expert reports conducted to illustrate that the project will add economic value to Granville County, will not affect property values, and is safe for the county and its citizens. Mangum Economics studied the project and concluded that it will contribute to Granville County fiscally with tax revenues and economically with job creation and increased spending, both of which support local wages and employment. Kirkland Appraisals studied the project and concluded that it is a compatible use for rural residential areas and does not affect property values. They also found that there would not be a meaningful impact to local traffic. And Tommy Cleveland, a North Carolina licensed and professional engineer, studied the project and concluded that it would not create negative impacts to public health or safety. It won't increase the ambient temperature of the area, it won't create meaningful noise during operation, or odors or emissions, and there won't be any significant lights at night. Both Rich Kirkland of Kirkland Appraisals and Tommy Cleveland, who wrote the book on solar panel safety for the North Carolina Clean Tech Center, are here in person with us and will be available for questions if needed. Duke Energy takes safety very seriously, and it is important. So let's talk briefly about solar panel safety. Recently, a large solar project in California was shut down after not meeting expectations. This was a concentrated solar project that uses mirrors to reflect sunlight toward a receiver that boils water to create steam, to spin a turbine to create electricity. Concentrated solar is an out-of-date technology that has largely been replaced by solar PV or photovoltaics, which is what our project will use. Solar PV is a simple solution, no mirrors, no heat, or even moving parts. The sunlight simply interacts with the silicon panel cells in a way that releases electrons down a wire that we put on the grid. Our panels do not use any cadmium, so risk of leaching is mitigated, but in an abundance of caution, the panels are fully encased in glass with strong aluminum frames. These panels are tested for fire, wind, hail, and pressure, and have anti-reflective coating to reduce glare. Duke Energy operators also monitor the site, will monitor the site 24/7. And solar sites around the U.S. and North Carolina have been extensively studied for decades. There are hundreds and thousands of them in the country, and they are safe. While battery technologies are newer, the industry has come a long way on safety. Now, the main concern with battery storage is fire, but the risk is actually very minimal. In 2019, sweeping national fire standards were put into place to govern the design and manufacture of battery storage systems. Since then, fire incidents have dropped precipitously. This is because of common sense design changes, like having isolated stocks of battery cells with firewalls in between them so that a fire can't spread as easily. There are also early detection systems, automatic suppression and cooling systems, and remote monitoring that can shut down the power if needed. Finally, today's batteries are also using more stable battery chemistries that are just less reactive than earlier ones. These are not like your car batteries. They're like ones in EVs. But even though the risk is low, what happens if a fire happens? Duke will know about the fire as soon as it happens through remote monitoring that we do 24/7. There will be a site-specific emergency response plan in place with local fire and EMS, who would have all received Duke Battery Fire Safety Training. And as far as handling the fire, the consensus approach is called controlled burning, where we let the battery fire consume itself. This is the safest course of action. At the end of our lease, or the project's useful life, Duke Energy will decommission the solar farm. This means removing all solar equipment and restoring the land to what it was before construction. We are obligated to do this under three different legal settings. The state of North Carolina requires us to decommission the site after energy is no longer being produced, and we must meet strict registration, restoration, and financial standards with North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality to do so. We are also required to decommission the project by Granville County's own ordinance, which we will comply with, as we've stated in our application. And finally, our lease agreement with the Thorpe family requires decommissioning to return the land to its natural state for their future use and enjoyment. Now, getting a project like this across the finish line takes a lot of work and coordination with various governments at the federal, state, and local level, and also with government agencies and industry organizations. This is not an exhaustive list, but I think it does show a good flavor of the parties we've coordinated with on the Granville Solar Center thus far. Granville County's seal is right off center in the middle there. Thank you.
I do.
If I can finish the presentation, and then we will take questions, if that's okay? So I hope the information that Colin has provided has been informative and that you've seen that throughout the presentation, how the Granville Solar Center directly addresses many of the county's pressing needs that were identified in the 2018 comprehensive plan. This project will generate new tax dollars to support county priorities such as your schools. It will promote workforce development and economic growth in the community. It will improve utility infrastructure and reliability. It will coordinate land use and infrastructure to maximize resources, all while posing minimal impact to neighboring residential use and agricultural operations. I'm also proud to share, as Mr. Thorpe mentioned, that the Thorpe family previously donated more than 1,000 acres to the Tar River Land Conservancy. They donated property near the project, and you can see the property that's been donated in the red blocks, whereas our project is in the blue on the screen. This land is permanently protected, helping to preserve the rural character of northern Granville County. Our project complements that and commits, that commits to incorporating buffers and exceeding the county requirements and including the wildlife corridors and the special fencing for small wildlife. We're also looking at ways to maintain agricultural elements at the site while it is a solar center. We've begun conversations with the Granville Cooperative Extension and the Local Beekeeper Association about creating intentional pollinator habitats. We've discussed the potential of establishing community hives and monarch butterfly waste stations, which is something Duke Energy recently did in Rockingham County. This effort not only supports local agricultural and the environment, but also opens the door to educational partnerships and hands-on learning opportunities for our community. So I hope you've seen over the years just how important community is to Duke Energy. We work hard to be forward-thinking and trustworthy, positive neighbors, while also keeping a focus on delivering the safe, reliable services to our customers and the communities that we serve. These two slides showcase some of the partnerships we've created just over the last two years. Our outreach doesn't end with supporting local entities, though. We place a strong emphasis on being transparent about our work and future projects. A few of you were able to join us at the open house, and I would like to share that normally we send out postcards to neighbors within a one-mile radius of a project, but because so few landowners were found in that radius, we extended it to two miles, and it led to postcards being delivered to approximately 4,000 land and homeowners in the area. In addition to speaking with the neighbors at this open house, we've met with the county's emergency management director and the fire marshal to ensure that their questions were addressed and that they felt comfortable with our plan as it relates to the codes currently that they have in the county. And I believe the emergency management director is here and prepared to answer any questions you may have about that conversation. I'm also proud to say that we've been listening to the needs of the county in various settings, again, not just the open house, but with the solar subcommittee and from the community comments that were made at the planning board meeting. We've incorporated ideas and desires into the plan that you've heard today, and it was valuable to our team to hear at the planning board meeting that the plan that we're presenting does meet and in fact exceed the Granville County ordinance, and that it does, in fact, represent a low-intensity land use that maintains open space while increasing the local tax base. I believe we've created a really great project that has high standards, maybe too high for future projects to come into this county. I believe that this project reflects what we've heard, and it reflects what you have found to be important. I'll be honest, though, this project means a little bit more to me than just that. I feel like it reflects what other communities will want to see in projects in their counties. And I believe that if we are forward-thinking and move ahead with this project, that Granville County could potentially set the standard for what solar looks like in North Carolina. To be a leader in this evolution of solar projects, we need your support, and we need to be building energy generation throughout the state of North Carolina. And wouldn't it be great for people to say, "I want our project to be like Granville County"? Now, I know you guys have heard a lot of information tonight, and we appreciate the continued dialogue. We appreciate the citizens coming out to share their thoughts. We hope that they have learned something throughout this presentation as well, and we're more than happy to continue the conversation. I am sad to hear that Commissioner Jay is not feeling well tonight and won't be here, but please let us know how we can continue the conversation to make sure that we're building the project that meets your county needs.
Thank you. And you had a question?
I do. When was the land donated to the conservatory?
2004 and 2006, between, so more than 20 years, or about 20 years ago.
Just bear with me, I just highlighted some things. Mrs. Thorpe stated that when this is completed, that the conserve water and soil, and so it would actually improve the soil. What does he mean by that?
You want to come to the microphone?
I can't hear you. Thank you.
Timberland into open land, the process of the soil regaining the vegetative matter as it runs through its course, but also planting lagoons like clover, adding nitrogen to the soil to enhance and improve the soil itself. Pine forest, I would say itself, some of these farmers are more expert than me because I'm raising cattle now, just no cattle in the biker pretty much, but lagoons like clovers and all stabilize. Pine soil is acidic, so if you think in terms of the up and down of alkalinity and acidic, you'll have a meta-type effect. That's the reason you get that soil improvement, particularly over a number of years like this, because you're not growing corn or something that's completely, or not completely, but constantly depriving it of nitrogen and so forth.
So you're saying the different types of plants or vegetation that we grow will, over a period of time, will actually create a better soil? So understanding after solar farms, and I'd be quite honest with you, I did a lot of reading on this, so I got a lot of questions. But I have read where there's concern about more metal compounds in the ground after solar farms.
Heavy metal, you mean?
Metals. Metals in the soil.
I don't know, I guess our experts could, the metallurgy, whatever you say that term, but I'm thinking aluminum and glass for the most part. I don't know if it leaches or so forth. I don't think so.
I can speak to that. And we do have a solar expert, or a solar health and safety expert here as well. Tommy, I will start to answer, and if you want to jump in where you can. So the polysilicon panels that we use, the only heavy metal in there is trace amounts of lead, which is in smaller quantities than the hunting buckshot lead that is like sprayed kind of raw all over, all over the place during normal hunting. So, and it's encased in the glass and aluminum, so the likelihood of that getting out is very, very low. And again, it's super small trace amounts. We are not using the cadmium telluride panels that are more prone to leaching and are much more toxic. So the main panel material is just polysilicon here in this case, which is a naturally occurring abundant material.
I understand. I kept hearing potentially batteries or...
Sure.
So what's potential and what's reality?
Yeah, so there's a competitive RFP to source new solar projects in the Carolinas that Duke and third-party companies have to bid projects into. They're all prioritized, compared, racked, and stacked for most mature, least cost, most de-risked, and the best ones are chosen to advance to construction. So this RFP has an independent evaluator. The independent evaluator will choose the mix of projects that makes the most sense for ratepayers and for development maturity. So that could look like a Granville just solar panels, just a solar facility, a solar-only facility as we call it, or it could look like a mix or a Granville solar plus or paired with storage facility. It depends on, so we would bid in two different costs, and then those are weighed against other projects that were bid in at the same time. It's kind of a convoluted process, but they're all compared, contrasted, the best ones rise to the top, and it might be Granville solar only, and it might be Granville solar plus storage. So that's like an independent evaluator makes that decision.
So when the fire occurs, if it occurs, and your strategy is to allow it to burn out, how long does that last? And what does that emit?
Mostly emitting just carbon dioxide and like volatile compounds. Tommy, I actually defer to you on fire safety here if you want to come forward. But if there were no batteries, there would be less likely to have a fire.
We got potential batteries, so I'm going to make the assumption that batteries will end up there because, so with that being said, yes, sir?
Yes, sir. Tommy Cleveland, I could address that. It would depend on exactly the final battery product selected and how large each container was for how long that fire might burn, but probably something like the order of a day or two days before it fully burned out, but it would, more intense part of the fire wouldn't last that long, and then it may smolder for going on to a day plus. And it would, I don't remember if that was all your question, if you had another part of your question, but it's, you know, a fire that emits smoke, it's something like the smoke of a burning house. You know, it's kind of like you've got a little bit of plastics mixed in, but it's something like a burning house smoke.
So if I'm correct, it would emit a plume of some type, and to what degree is that plume? Are we talking like a house fire, which can be relatively significant? And so you're saying it could last for a day if a fire occurs?
Before it's fully out, yes, sir, but not...
And what danger does that pose to any of the wildlife or those that live around it, so forth?
Yeah. None, and I want to make sure I'm clear, I'm not saying the size of the fire would be similar to a house fire. It'd be much smaller, but just the type of smoke would be similar to the type of smoke. It would not pose any danger or hazard to wildlife nearby. The battery field would have multiple battery containers side by side, and those get tested and approved for a certain spacing between the containers, such that if one container catches on fire, the containers around it would be certain not to catch on fire. Just to give you a sense of how intensive, like it's not that intensive a fire, people can be around it, it would not impact any wildlife nearby. And as you've heard, the neighbors at this site are extremely far away. These sites are, battery-type sites are often much closer to neighbors than this is proposed, so it's, you know, no health concerns from this fire, even a worst-case fire from concerns of, you know, impacts to neighbors. Nonetheless, no concern to wildlife.
So from the fires you've studied, from these solar fires, this is the best term I'm using, I know I'm not being specific, but fires caused by solar farms or the action therein, do you have any studies in regards to where they've occurred before and how they've impacted surrounding areas?
Well, I'll say it's really only the, only the battery itself that's susceptible to burning. I just want to clarify, you said solar, the solar aspects really...
Right, I understand.
Okay. There's a number of reports you can find about fires that have occurred. In my, I prepared the health and safety assessment, and it has almost half a page about a fairly recent fire in California with a much older technology that was batteries inside of a large warehouse-style building rather than these containerized batteries. And that fire with this much older technology, batteries across this whole building caught on fire, so many, many times larger than could ever be possible at this site. And they brought in the EPA quickly and monitored air all around the facility and found that there was such low levels in the air in the round, the surrounding area, that there was no concern for health or anybody nearby. And that's, just to emphasize, much worse than could possibly happen here, it was a much older technology inside a building, much larger system where it was possible for it all to catch on fire. It was extremely different in this. And even in that case, you know, they measured the air quality, and it was considered not problematic for the neighbors.
Mr. Welch, you identified three criteria for selection of the solar, for solar farm. One was large, flat, and dry land.
Correct.
Is there some wetland on this projected site?
Sure, there is.
Okay, can you please describe that to us and how that met the criteria based on your statement?
Yeah, let me go back a few slides. It shows where they are, and then I'll speak to them. Oh, right, yeah, right there. So the wetlands are in the beige areas, and as you can see in the design, we've avoided...
So help me out with that, sir. For me, it looks yellow. I just want to make sure I'm...
Yeah, the yellow kind of tendrils going through the site.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so the blue area, the dark blue areas are the solar panels, the kind of yellow tendrils are where the smaller wetland features are. We've avoided those by design with 50-foot buffers, and then we've avoided entirely the southwest corner, which is Fox Creek. It's really hard to find a perfectly square, perfectly flat, large parcel in North Carolina. This is not Texas or Arizona, so we have to work with what we have, given the mandates we have for this area, as Beth mentioned earlier. So with that understanding, our professional opinion is that this is an excellent site. It's on those transmission lines, which that right there will reduce the cost of a project by magnitudes and will make or break a project. If a project's much further away from the transmission line, where you have to do a collector line several miles to get there, that will kill a project immediately. So the fact that it's on and using existing infrastructure, number one, amazing, that's our top priority. Number two is the buildability aspect. We have an entire engineering team that looks at all constructibility, buildability aspect using publicly available national wetland inventory, soil data from USGS, and we do on top of that site-specific due diligence studies, geotech, phase-one ESAs, threatened endangered species, cultural resources, hydrology studies, all to come up with a site plan like this that makes the best of imperfect land. Like, right, it would be great if we could put all solar in some small pocket of Arizona. We can't do that practically, and so using this site is, in our professional opinion, a great site.
New device was 75 megawatts, is that, am I correct?
Correct.
How many homes is that energized?
I believe around 12,000. And it will actually contribute to the local distribution grid here because there are two endpoint distribution centers in Granville County that connect to these larger 230 KV lines. So the electrons that are generated, while they, we don't know exactly, can't track electrons across the grid, the likelihood is some of them will end up in Granville County, contributing to renewable power here.
So I've got more questions, but I'm going to let other commissioners ask questions and then move on, get back to it.
Does anyone else have questions?
My only question, I think Commissioner Mayo, you answered, is in the likelihood of a fire, you're saying that this is self-contained, it's not going to spread from one panel to another panel, so it would only be because of the battery?
Correct.
And you're not going to have a situation where 50 of these panels ignite simultaneously?
Correct. So the panels, the solar panels themselves have very, there is no fire risk from the solar panels. It's the batteries that have some amount of fire risk, and let me go back to the safety slide, and there's an image that actually will help paint the picture. So that is a containerized battery, kind of at the bottom of that slide with the doors open. These are not things that you can just walk into. They're completely taken up floor to ceiling with batteries, and in between them, those like kind of gray lines are firewallled, isolated sections that prevent the cells, which is where the fire risk comes from, from bleeding over into other cells. So those firewalls, plus the National Fire Protection Association rules that came out, standard across the country in 2019, really have come a long way to make battery fires, you know, drop precipitously in recent years. And then several other things to just reduce the fire risk. Again, there's the 24/7 monitoring, there's pressure relief valves to make sure that gases don't build up on the inside, and there are advanced cooling systems. Tommy, am I missing any, active suppression? The amount of effort that has gone into reducing battery fires is immense, and the industry itself prides itself on how far it has come. And that's not Duke Energy, that's the larger global battery supply, battery energy.
And I will add that all of our site locations, no matter what it is, we have emergency response plans that we put in place, and we work with our local emergency management, and in this case, we have spoken with local emergency, the emergency management director, as well as the fire marshal, to discuss the plan and, again, their comfort level. We would provide training if that is what they feel is deemed important to make sure the project is successful.
I will just add one additional thing. In this site map, the zoning plan, in the sort, in the middle of the plan, there's a red box. That is the proposed battery location. It is south of the transmission line, and as we discussed earlier, those four stars are the only permanent residences in the area, the closest of which is two football fields away, separated by that Zone 2 space, the 150-foot pine tree buffer, Satterwhite Road, and then their property. There's also a fence, so like the, a consideration is just making sure the public is not near the fire, so that the fact that the fire would be, if there was one, within the site, within the battery location, not jumping to other batteries, just kind of burning out, that's why there's a controlled burn approach, because there is nothing else around, it's all on gravel beds, there's the containerized battery, you know, one fire happens and you let it consume itself, it has similar smoke plume to, you know, a similar makeup to the smoke of a house fire, but much, much smaller in actual scale.
Mr. Chair, I've got another, three more lines of questioning, I just want to make sure that no other commissioners, Tom, I don't want to take up your time. Are we good?
Does anyone else have anything?
Meaningful noise. So if you've lived in a community your entire life, you have no noise, other than the owls, the crickets, wonderful sound in nature, which unfortunately I haven't heard for years. What, what's meaningful noise?
So I'll give my answer, and then I'll let Tommy speak to that. He's the author of the report that we submitted, which does discuss noise. If you've ever stood under a transmission line tower, if you've heard that, it's right under it, it's a little bit, but seven, two football fields away, it's not meaningful. That's the uneducated version. Tommy, if, you know, you want to speak more in more depth.
So Mr. Tommy, is there any decibel change?
At the property line, which is where the county has a requirement, there would, you would be able to hear it standing right at the property line. I don't know that you will by the time you get to these residences. I expect you would not at the residences. There's not much that makes equipment, or makes noise, and it only makes noise at certain periods of time. It's just the inverters for the solar and the batteries. Those batteries are only operating a few hours a day, so the rest of the time, they're making no noise, and the solar's only operating, obviously, in the daytime, so it makes no noise at night. So it's, the equipment itself is not silent, but it's not very loud, and it's far away from any neighbors, so I would not expect any neighbors to hear it. And I go through some analysis in the, in the report.
What impact does have on...
Did I understand that the only time there would be any noise would be during the daylight hours?
For the solar equipment, for the batteries, they may be, potentially could be charged at night, which would have them operating, and they would make some, the inverters for the batteries could make some noise at night, but the solar equipment would not make any noise.
Okay, sorry to interrupt.
No, it's a good question, thank you. And how, what's that noise like?
For the solar, the batteries?
The battery inverters?
Yeah, the same as the solar. So it does, when it's operating, it has kind of an electrical hum to it, and it's got cooling fans. So if you're standing right beside it, it's very noticeable, but it diminishes quickly with distance, and that's what I've done some analysis in the, based on that distance to the nearby homes or the closest homes. And it's, if you, I put together all the sound from those batteries, that I calculated at the closest home to be 38 and a half decibels, which is quieter than a rural environment. A quiet rural environment's 40 to 45 decibels, so it's essentially, you can't hear it above just normal, super quiet rural sounds, and that's only at its peak volume, that's when all the batteries are running full out.
So what is 45 decibels? What is, that's, that's normal rural sound, right? That includes nature itself?
That includes nature, that is nature itself.
Okay, so, so, and what is, again, what is it when they're all running?
This is, would be at the nearby homes, 38 and a half, 38.5 decibels, and that's not considering any attenuation you would get from those hundreds of feet of pine trees. So this was of a worst case, assuming you've got no pine trees or anything else between the homes and those batteries. So it would be a lot less than that, but I didn't try to attempt to say how much less. It's already so low in this case, I wouldn't expect it to be heard.
If I may jump in just a second, are these inverters inside the containers with the batteries?
It depends on the design. Some manufacturers put the batteries in the inversion wing container, sometimes inverters are underneath, sometimes on one end of the container. Other products separate them into two different containers. Different products on the market are slightly different.
And that would have an effect on the amount of noise it made? If it was inside the container closed and sealed, it would be very different from on the end underneath the bottom. Am I...
There would be, I wouldn't, not very different, it could be somewhat different. The ones that stand alone are also in a very similar container, it's just a separate container instead of attached to part of the battery container. So there's small differences between those different products, but not significant.
I would also like to clarify, on the map, you can see the pink dots kind of further in, those are the solar inverters, where they would be, so they're even further into the site away from residences, and therefore less likely to carry that noise. The battery inverters would obviously be in that battery box that I described earlier in the center.
How are you going to mitigate erosion when you begin construction and impact on neighboring properties?
So during construction, we have to submit erosion and sediment control plans with North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality and get permitted to a certain standard to move forward with construction, and we will comply with, we've built a lot of these, and we will comply with all regulation at the state and local level and federal level.
I have a question.
Yes, I'd like to hear more.
Justin LaRoche with Duke Energy as well. The best way to manage erosion control is through growing grass, so we build that into the construction process after you remove the trees from the... after you remove the trees from the site, we'll try to give it time to, uh, establish new grasses on the site, in addition to best management practices, the erosion control in ponds, so North Carolina rules, you can't increase the amount of runoff to neighboring properties than preexisted beforehand.
Based on topography, what are you estimating in regards to the volume of, of runoff?
Uh, that hasn't been calculated at this stage, that'd be more of a detailed engineering milestone.
Well, if you had a significant amount of, of, of volume of water, then that would definitely impact your, your neighboring areas, right, so, I mean, would that not have been studied by now?
So, so we are still very early days in this project, uh, but I will reiterate that this is not a permeable surface, rain will, uh, go around the panels and directly into the ground, the panels themselves will not increase runoff, the, the, the amount of permeable surfaces is limited to the substation pad, uh, in the battery area, which is like two percent of this entire project, um, so the rest of the site is just where, like, piles will be put into the ground, panels will be fixed on top, and rain will hit the panel, hit the ground below, and go into the ground below, so the amount of runoff expected at this point is low.
Commissioner, Commissioner Griffin has...
Um, just to kind of follow up on that question, I had a question about erosion, uh, what kind of erosion impacts are we going to have running into streams and creeks and then into rivers, especially if, during your construction process, say we have a, a terrible hurricane or a terrible storm, you don't have any grass or anything planted, and the trees have been removed, and we have land laying there, and it starts with water runoff, what is going to run in the, in the area where it has the easiest time to go, which is going to cause, uh, crevices in the land, and, and going to find its way into creeks and rivers and valleys and streams?
Yeah, correct, so that's where you have to have a permit from the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, uh, so best practices include like silt fencing around those stream wetland features, and then they establish vegetation on, on the grounds, you want to do the, you prioritize those items first, such that if you have a major storm event comes in, you're minimizing those impacts, all of those stormwater basins then have to get inspected by the state as well, for compliance.
I have another question about environmental issues, um, and I read some of it in your report, uh, to control vegetation around these solar panels, what, what are you planning to do, are you planning to use mechanical means, uh, livestock or, uh, herbicides to control the vegetation around them to keep it from impacting the solar panels?
It is primarily mechanical means through mowing, uh, but there would be some spot, uh, spot usage of herbicides where the mowers can't get.
We've, uh, we've tested out sheep in the past, um, and it comes with a challenge, sheep don't eat all vegetation, so it goes, uh, part of that, that early stage planting, planting the right, the right grass types and clovers if you want to do that, and then finding a sheet herper, a sheet, um, herder to manage that, we've tested it out, and just, and it still requires mechanical, uh, mowing, so we haven't seen it as being a, a cost-effective solution.
The herbicide use, um...
Very minimal, uh, just in, in, along the fence lines, posts, uh, just problem areas they get to, uh, minimal use of herbicides, we try not to.
But it would be part of the runoff, if you had a rain event, correct?
Um, I guess if you use best practices when you try to apply it to minimize the rain forecast, yeah.
Wildlife displacement, can someone please tell us about that, because I heard we talked about small animals, and that you were taking precautions to make sure that they would have a segue to and from, but what are we doing for, uh, say, a, an average-sized deer or something, it wants to contain, uh, they won't, unable to jump over the higher fence or something like that, but what do we do with the wildlife and that amount of acreage, uh, what about, how's, how does that impact, uh, your surrounding neighbors?
Uh, so for the wildlife, we, we do take into account the smaller wildlife to, like, keep them, uh, able to move unencumbered, uh, and the wildlife corridors would be used by larger animals, uh, they're, they would be outside of the fence line, they're not going to jump over a ten-foot fence, um, and, and that's why we prioritize those along the water features, to keep the animals kind of where they would need to, to be, um, and not in, you know, the construction site and then the operating solar farm.
So is your studies discuss anything about bird strikes, and anything about wildlife displacement, and how, how that has been impacted in large, I, I guess it's not the largest you have, but this seems to be a very large one to me, um, do you have any studies that, uh, that you can lean on to describe to us how, how, how that, how that's impact nature and wildlife itself?
I can talk generally to our threatened and endangered species assessments that we've, we've had conducted, um, and then maybe you can answer the bird, uh, um, reflectivity issue, um, so we, in the normal course of due diligence for all of our solar projects, we work with the United States Fish and Wildlife Service, um, uh, well, first, we have an environmental consultant come out and, and do a desktop analysis of any existing resources of, uh, you know, critical habitat and species assessments for this particular site, then they will come on the site and walk, walk the site, see if any of those actual habitats are present, we, they'll come up with a report, uh, we'll submit those results to the Fish and Wildlife Service, uh, for concurrence, which basically says, hey, we think we know what's going on in this particular site, uh, they will be the ultimate authority that says, uh, yeah, you're right, or no, you have a lot of work to do, uh, we have submitted those results to the Fish and Wildlife Service, we are waiting for a response, um, from, from them, and then, Justin, if you want to...
Yeah, the, the, um, concern that once there's a solar seal out, out in the, the ground, that, uh, birds think it's a pond, or migrant birds are going to come and try to land on it, uh, is a myth, we have not experienced that in any of our, uh, operating facilities today, um, bird strikes are not, not a, a concern, the solar panels themselves are coated with an anti-reflective, uh, coat as well, uh, which actually helps provide, uh, glares to the neighboring properties as well.
So you're saying that reported bird strikes do not occur?
Not for solar facilities, we have not had bird strikes, um, has not been a, a problem at our facilities, no.
And you've talked about endangered species, what about wildlife that's not endangered, but are common, everyday, uh, small, small mammals, what, what about those?
Yeah, again, I think we would point out that the, the site today is in civil culture practices, which is intended to be timbered and removed throughout its, its useful life anyways, um, so it's part of the, the natural design for this, this property.
So you're not concerned with any wildlife being displaced because it's been timbered before, when was the last time it was timbered?
Uh, no, we're not concerned, we're very conscious of it, and we recognize that we're changing the topography of, of the land and, and the use, uh, but it's by design, it, it's not, um, in the conservation, it's not in, uh, planted corn today, right, it's in civil culture, it's designed, it has been growing trees, once these trees matured, they would be removed again and, and replaced.
It was timbered in, I believe, ninety-one or ninety-two.
Thank you, sir. That's all the questions I have for now, thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, here and done, uh, who else do we have that wants to speak in favor of this rezoning?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, we appreciate you, your presentation. Uh, we've had people sign up, and some were for, some were against, uh, we're trying to get those that are for it to go ahead and speak now, and then we'll go to those that oppose it. Okay, well, we'll go to those who oppose it now, and if you will, uh, come forward and speak, uh, speak your piece, uh, we've had, uh, yeah, uh, uh, we, the ones that signed up, we have Keith Sexton and Tracy Sexton, you hear and want to speak? And, and again, if you will, state your name and address for the record, and...
I'm Keith Sexton, uh, two sixteen West Thorndale Drive in Oxford, I'm a pastor and a farmer, and after my plant comments, I'd be glad to speak about soil health, um, and what was said earlier, uh, there is, there's more to be said. So Commissioners, neighbors, Mr. Thorpe and Duke Energy representatives, we had the same conversation nine weeks ago at the planning board, who resoundingly voted this down, so I want to share with you what I shared then, Granville County's history, present and future is rooted in agriculture, sixteen percent of North Carolina's economy, one out of every six dollars comes from agriculture, we lose forty-eight thousand acres of farmland every year in North Carolina, in seven years, that's the same amount of land as Granville County. Friends, they're not making any more farmland. However, this land has been used, once solar's on it, the option to farm it is gone. In twenty-twenty-four, cleared farmland was going for twenty-five thousand dollars and more per acre, I know because I was trying to buy it, I was fortunate enough to find twenty-eight acres here in Granville County to start our farm, it's just a stone's throw from the property in question. In twenty-twenty-four, Granville County had ninety days above sixty degrees in our growing season, with weeks of no rain, the cost of ventilation fans, well pumps, irrigation and coal storage add twenty to twenty-five percent, just from energy costs alone, with fees like fuel fees and added fees, do you know that farmers pay significantly more for energy from Duke Energy than any other business? Nothing in this proposal reduces the energy costs for farmers. Agriculture support, you ask what kind of enterprise that would be, as a farmer, that would be something that helps us get crops in the ground, get them ready for market, seasonal storage or added value, this is not agricultural support, and that alone should eliminate it from this zoning plan. Solar displaces farmland, and rural open land is like eating your seed corn, friends, so let me be clear, I am for solar in the right places. In Granville County, that would be rooftops, abandoned warehouse lots, parking lots, but never, ever to displace farmland. Approximately a hundred and fifty to two hundred acres of solar ray could be positioned along I-85 in Granville County, if we started at the state line and went south to Granville County, where those high-tension lines cross in Butner, we would be able to produce more electricity than we're talking here. In twenty-twenty-four, Dr. Steven Jervix, a rocket scientist that helped put Saturn Four Five and the lunar landing module on the moon, submitted testimony to the Utilities Commission detailing how Duke Energy could meet renewable benchmarks without eating up one square inch of farmland, other scientific agencies repeated what he said. Though the closer a product is to the consumer, the lower the cost of goods, and while macro's important, micro makes a big part of the solution, when south-facing roofs, either by lease or purchase, and battery storage from Crete, Moore and Butner all the way to the Virginia Line are put in this county, we are able to produce energy that could be used here, and if it's used here, then the energy that's being shipped here could be sent somewhere else, and don't you think it would cost us less for energy if it's produced here and distributed here? Again, I'm not a farmer or pastor offering pie in the sky, this is based on science, my friend, Dr. Jervix, and so I ask you this, I have concerns, when we step outside of the zoning precedent, what happens when an AI farm, or when a Bitcoin marketing, mining facility wants to come and say, well, you changed the rules there, why can't you change the rules now? So, I wonder how many questions the Rockingham County Council asked before the Duke coal ash pit was put near the Dan River, I'll bet my farm they had a lot more questions after twenty-seven million gallons of ash pond water and thirty-nine thousand tons of coal ash was in the Dan River Eden's water supply, so I want you to check out turbidity at the Mariah Energy Center next door in Timberlake, no state agency has taken action. What about the shaded areas where grass won't grow, what's going to happen to runoff there, my farm uses regenerative processes, so any chemical runoff will ruin my crops, and the deer that aren't there are going to come and eat my crops, seven acres of deer fence is going to cost me fifty thousand dollars, so did Duke Energy, did their executives or did their stockholders pay for the Duke coal ash debacle? No, we did, the ratepayers, so I want you to have assurances in cold, hard cash and escrow, that any unintended consequence will fully be funded by Duke. There is no economic incentive, real or imagined, even with the tax incentives here, that are worth selling our birthright as an agricultural community or our seed corn, we have already said no as the people, we come again to say no as the people, we ask you to hear our voice, vote no again, and close this matter for any fut- future consideration, and I appreciate your time. As to soil health, there's nothing about the solar aspect that will improve soil health, but the planting of cover crop will put nitrogen in the soil, however, forests have an entirely different soil makeup, what happens in forest soil is the root systems create lots of airspace and lots of what's called viable space to take water runoff and hold it, it, there is an entirely different chemistry in forest soil for taking carbon and locking in the soil, where on farmland, that nitrogen in the soil is only good once you farm it, so there is a, it's not that the soil's being improved, it's being changed, okay, changed for a different purpose, fixing nitrogen is great on a farm, fixing carbon is great in a forest, so it's two different kinds of soil doing two different kinds of things, so I want you to know that too, thank you much.
Thank you, and if you will state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Tracy Sexton, I'm also at two sixteen West Thorndale in Oxford.
Thank you, thank you.
Duke Energy is bent on setting a course for its own benefit, and I am begging you Commissioners to see through their plans and say no to acres and acres and acres of destroyed trees that sequester carbon and that provide homes for wildlife, uh, Duke Energy is part of a fossil fuel build out in Person County, and that's actually where I'm from, um, Enbridge's Mariah Energy Center is just five miles from my family's, where I grew up there, um, and the Mariah Energy Center is under construction now, um, it's a, 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 like, a gas plant is what it is, it's going to be storage, um, and it has had a tremendous impact on waterways there, waterways that contain endangered species, citizens there have submitted water sample after water sample, and they have proved that the turbidity of the water is more, more than the state allows, but, um, the state has not held them accountable, you mentioned DEQ, um, and, um, so the answers that, that I heard that the Commissioners asked the questions to Duke Energy tonight, it, it just hurt my heart that they really hadn't even considered the waterways that are so prevalent on those pictures, and that it's like that's going to be an after fact or afterthought of, well, we'll figure that out later, um, and that seems to me like using the same, uh, playbook that Enbridge is using, that they literally plow ahead knowing that they can just get away with it because they're, um, a monopoly, a big monopoly, um, so I ask you to pay attention, um, to, as COP thirty meets in Brazil this month, just to discuss mitigating climate change, read the lawsuit, the town of Carboro filed against Duke Energy, it points out the nefarious things Duke Energy has been up to, um, read the book by a North Carolina author, it's called On the Swamp, read North Carolina Warren's Climate Proposal, that calls for solar plus battery storage on houses, businesses and parking lots, so that the energy is produced where it's used, and NC Warren says that local solar plus battery is becoming even cheaper and more reliable than solar farms, and they also point out Duke Energy would benefit by moving away from high-risk and costly fossil fuels and experimental nukes, and instead use the rate system to pay for rooftop solar, Duke could make the same return on their investment without enormous business risks of fossil fuels, and need I remind you of the coal ash fiasco that still plagues them, and more importantly, I've been to meetings in Person County, there are people who are suffering there, um, they have cancer, um, shortening their lives and compromising their health and the quality of their life, the water's polluted, um, who live near the, this, um, this coal ash mess, um, so I'm waiting, and I have been waiting for Duke Energy to move beyond greenwashing and to truly embrace clean energy, I hope that Duke Energy will, um, choose that course sooner rather than later, because eventually they will be held accountable, and I'm asking you Commissioners to hold them accountable now and say no to this destruction of land, I am for solar, just not solar that goes on for as far as the eye can see near waterways, I'm not for cutting down these, this hundred-year-old forest, um, and my farm is less than a mile from this site, and I don't want this site to be my neighbor, thank you.
And thank you, uh, Mr. David... And thank you, Mr. David Atkins. And if you will, state your name and address for the, for the record, for Karen, please. Thank you.
Thank you, boys. Thank you, commissioners, chairman. Yeah, I'm David Atkins and I live at 7619 NC Highway 96 in Oxford, about four and a half miles from this proposed site. And I was at this planning board on August 21st. And I had some concerns and I still have some concerns about this solar farm. One of my concerns is the neighboring landowners, their property values will go down. There's no way it's not, not going to go down with this solar farm close by. The noise, the humming, the alarms going off day and night, nobody said anything about the alarms. Cooling fans, they go on and off too. I recently went to a solar farm called the Bullock Solar Farm. And it Myers and I went and when we got out, we saw, we saw solar panels here, solar panels there. Everywhere you look is a solar panel. And they were humming and buzzing. And we stayed there about 45 minutes. And you could see all the cooling fans. And I asked the guy, I said, tell me something, I've been here about 45 minutes. I said, I hadn't even seen a cooling fan come on. Oh, they don't come on all the time. So if you happen to go to a solar farm, make sure they keep the, the cooling fans on. So you can see the real deal. Because they're going to just butter it up and tell you what they want you to see and what, they're going to tell you all the stuff. So make sure you get the real deal. The high volumes of traffic, construction, the dirt, dust, the noise, the mowing of grass. They mentioned it would be mowing, grass mowing. And that's pretty constant, even after they get the place built. So that's going to be continuous. The main one is the fire department. No infrastructure. Everything is volunteer here. Oh, I was, I was up in Orange County. We moved down here in 2018. And one of the substations caught on fire up there, so it does happen. Another incident happened in Lime, New York in 2023. It's a large solar farm about the same size as this. It had four storage battery containers that caught fire. Two transformers caught fire. Took three days to put it out, people, three days. And they told those people to shelter in place. Can you imagine people like Mr. John Willoughby having to stay in his house for three days? And all the other landowners close by? And as soon as you get this one passed, you know, we still had the Oxford, I mean, the Oak Hill one is still kind of lingering in the past. And I'm going to be caught between both of them. I have, I'll have solar over here, solar over there. And that's going to open up a new thing for Granville County. It's going to really open it up. It took one year to clean it up. Is that part of the decommission to clean it up? I don't know. You know, it's got, it's got to be cleaned, is Duke going to pay for it if we get to clean all this up? They didn't pay, they didn't pay for that coal ash. You know, it, it's, it's, this, this is a very important decision to make for the commissioners, I'm telling you, it's very important. I know I, I don't want to live next door to a, to a solar farm like this. And up, up my livelihood and have to shelter in place, uh-uh, no. You know, I like it quiet, I like to keep it quiet. And I'd ask you to deny this, just like, just like the planning commission denied it. I don't see nothing has changed. Thank you.
And thank you, sir. And Mrs. Net Myers.
Good evening, members of the Granville County Board of Commissioners. I'm Annette P. Myers, 6587 Alvis Brooks Road, Oxford. I was happily raised on a rural northern Granville County tobacco and crop farm. And after some time away decades ago, I returned to this area. I want to thank the commission boards for the questions that you asked this evening. I thought they were educational for all of us. As I stated when I spoke to the Granville County Planning Board, I'm not here to bash the applicant. I am not anti-solar, but I am for smart solar, solar energy development that does not consume arable farmland in huge swaths. I am disappointed that the applicant has not used the brain trust that they employ in engineers and other sciences to develop a more environmentally friendly way to capture solar power, to name a few. And you've heard it earlier this evening, over parking lots and decks, which actually ends up providing shade, rooftops of commercial and governmental buildings, highway medians, and studying actions in Europe as they advance solar power with their limited land surface. Is it because this request is the fastest return for stockholders? It would be wonderful to see the applicant become a leading innovator in solar and other resources of renewable energy. Granville County approved solar farms several decades ago with the deliberate plan that farmers who were retiring and had 50 to 100 acres could use the potential of solar energy production as a way to use part of that acreage to produce income. The planning director informs me that in the intervening years, there have been eight permitted installations in this county averaging in size from 35 to 50 acres. That plan seems to be working. Why am I here this evening? As I told Norman Thorpe in our conversation, I'm here to state to you in three or four words, the basis of my opposition to this installation. In three words, it's the size. In four words, it is the size. This proposed installation is a commercial endeavor that has no characteristics of farm, rural or gurian. It does not preserve rural character. It will negatively impact the natural movement of wildlife. And as a aside and to make you smile perhaps, I told Mr. Thorpe, I wasn't sure that wildlife in Granville County was smart enough that when he ran up against a fence, if they knew if they turned right and ran down 100 feet, they'd find a hole. It can impact any groundwater or wetlands. It will destroy the natural features or contours of the area. And there's a potential contamination from the metals on surrounding crop lands. And of course, you've discussed the noise level this evening, and they don't really have a grip on it, as well as the need for fire protection. All these negatives, while the economic benefit to the county is small, when you do the math, using the numbers in the applicant study on the economic and fiscal, fiscal contribution to the county of this project, the report states that over the 35 years expected life of the installation, the total fiscal contribution of this proposal is $4.2 million, a little more than $100,000 a year. It was also stated with the planning board that construction would not commence until 2029, and that's been repeated this evening. Is that to wait and see what decisions may be made in Washington on energy production? We know that the North Carolina General Assembly has voted to allow Duke to charge customers now for future anticipated construction. Will we run out of land before they run out of plants? I hope you as a decision maker in Granville County are well aware that there's a finite amount of productive farmland in this county. And reports from Cooperative Extension and NC State report that Granville County farmland is disappearing as one, at one of the fastest rates of any county in this state. Northern Granville County has played a big part in the history of the success of this county because of its agriculture and contenders so today. That includes crop land and forest land, which are both harvested at their peak of highest production, as well as crops and animals that provide food and materials that have historically kept this county as a key agricultural entity in North Carolina. Based on figures provided by Car-Tar Cog, NC State, and the Cooperative Extension Service and the North Carolina Forest Service, there are 538 square miles in Granville County. That computes to a little over 340,000 total acres. Based on data from 2017 and 2022, only 102,000 acres were in farmland at that time. That is less than one-third of the land mass. That same Cooperative Extension report states that the crop land produced almost $5 million in grain and beans, $135,000 in agritourism, over $5 million in vegetables, $7 million in animal products, and the 2023 timber sales in Granville County of $6 million plus. I think the county is reaping the benefit of the work of approximately 700 farmers, men and women, who quietly go to work each day instead of putting a heavy demand on county services. I've been provided background material from the applicant and as I stated, talking with a family member. I appreciate them sharing some of their plans if this request were granted, including planting pollinators, erecting a fence that would allow small wildlife to travel through the site, and other efforts to make it as unobtrusive as possible. Face it, commissioners, if this truly were going to preserve the rural character and not be an eyesore and a total misfit in the agricultural setting, why are there multiple facets of the plan to disguise and camouflage it? You can't put a price on nature, productive farmland, forest and fresh air. To recover such loss would require decades, centuries or never. A final word, let's look past this decision. I am here to state that I understand that there are other requests awaiting in the wings to propose even larger parcels of land in northern Granville County for solar installations. If you study the actions across the US, you can expect data centers to appear soon requesting a rezoning for their use. Person County does not allow solar installations, but Microsoft owns 1,300 acres there and they haven't yet stated their intention. Warren County does not allow solar installations. Mecklenburg County, Virginia, with its huge data center, does not allow solar installation. I have information that Wayne County requires a soil analysis. And if the soil is productive agricultural soil, you can't put a solar installation there. Does the prohibition or tight control of such installations in other areas of the state explain why Granville County now finds itself in the crosshairs? If you destroy the beauty of the countryside of Granville County, we will no longer be unique. We will be just like all those other places people are leaving because they want to settle in rural vistas. Commissioners, I repeat, it's four words, it is the size. Thank you for hearing my points and your decision to adopt the planning board's recommendation that you deny this request because it does not meet the standards for rezoning in this case. Thank you.
And thank you for your comments. Mr. James Daniel. Jimmy, you want to? Yeah, come forward and just state your name and address for the record and.
My name is James Daniel. I live in Butler, 400th century, I haven't even been Butler. Just like the other ones that spoke, I had to sit through that planning board meeting and listen to all this sugar and honey that they put out. I like to went to sleep while they were talking a little while ago. Same stuff that they proposed at the planning board. We got four members on the planning board that were right that night. If they weren't right, why, why do we even need a planning board? I had one that called me the other day and said, I hope the county commissioners do right. He said, because if they don't, it's going to make me look like a fool for shooting it down that night. Let me get back to what I was saying real quick. I'm totally against massive solar fields in any shape, form or fashion. They do make excessive noise. I don't know what they're talking about, but if you go some down east, you can stand a half mile away and you hear this. And when the fans come on, it's even louder. Nighttime lights flashing, bells going off, the whole nine yards. If they're going to tell the truth, tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth. It destroys thousands of trees and hundreds of acres of natural vegetation. Massive stormwater, when he was talking about that. I'm, I'm, I'm charged $318 a year for the water that runs off my four properties and a fire tax on my land up on Saddle White Road. But are they supposed to pay it? I think, your name is Mr. Baker, right? They're exempt for any stormwater fee, million hours, million hours, all of them. What about the fire tax, they're going to be charged that? I am on Saddle White Road and my property butts right up to the backside of his and Duane's backs up to the other side of it. And then they're saying it's 6-2 football field. Somebody needs to go back and measure what they did because it's closer than that. I don't live there, but I camp out there. If I walked out on the power lines, that solar field would be less than 300 yards from our property. Less than 300 yards. They recently shot down a solar field in Person County. Their county charter is that no thing can be used on farmlands except residential and productive farming. A solar farm is not a farm, it's a solar field. A solar farm, they can grow anything. It can't lay eggs, it can't produce vegetables. They can fancy it up and put all the flowers and rose bushes they want to around it and talk about bees coming in. Hey, and when they sit, when you ask the question about the birds, I've got several people that has worked around them. They pick birds up on the ground all the time, but it died under the panels. Solar fields also bring down a property, value property. Who wants to live around a solar field that's even a quarter of a mile or a half a mile away? You can't sell your property. Nobody wants to live around them. If they do, then more power to them. When the solar field has, when the solar field has a fire, not here, when they have a fire, who's going to put it out? Going to call Granville County, the fire department up there, the fire marshal, blah, blah, blah? They said they would, they would train somebody to do it. We don't even have a fire department up here in northern Granville. So who's going to do it? Maybe they just let it burn itself out like he said and emit toxic fumes. When he said it might smell like plastic. I've never known electrical fire that wouldn't choke you to death if you were standing close to it or even in the neighborhood. Granville County Commissioners haven't even decided on this solar field. I'm not going to call it a farm yet. And last week, they're up here in Oak Hill wanting to put another one in. Already they called the planning board to get it set up so they can spout their propaganda. Another 400 and some acre one. If these solar fields are voted in, I will go to the tax office to ask for a $40,000 to $50,000 tax reduction to where it was before the taxes went up last year, the same price I was paying for it. I've got 1,300 feet of road frontage that I could put six houses, six and a half houses on, on one acre lots. Think about the tax money Granville County could get for that, 300 to 400 to 500,000. I couldn't sell that now, not with the solar field right down the street. I couldn't sell that now, not with the solar field right down the street. The only person I could sell it to was that power company, that solar company that he was talking about out of Arizona that offered me $40,000 less than what my property was listed for on the tax books last year. Maybe they knew what they were talking about, but offered me $40,000 less. And I'll advise anybody that lives on Saddle White Road, to Henry Huff Road, and anywhere else that a solar field is, to go to the tax office to ask for a reevaluation because their property won't be as little worth as much as what they paid for it when they bought it. That's all I have to say. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel. And Mr. John Williford.
Yes, sir. And if you will...
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is John Williford. I live at 1275 Saddle White Road in Oxford. We live within a half mile of the solar farm site and also have children, grandchildren, also within the same area. My family has lived there for 40 years. We moved there because of the nature, the beautiful farmland and trees. It's important for us to protect our environment, wildlife habitats, and farmland for future generations. I understand the reason why Mr. Thorpe and his family are interested in the solar farm, but my concerns are the large size of the solar farm. I also am concerned about the maintenance of the solar farm and what happens to the solar panels after the lifetime of the farm is up. One of the main concerns is currently we're in no-fire district. We are, and everybody knows how fast a fire can get out of control. Our closest volunteer fire department are Berea, Cornwall, Allensville, which all are approximately nine to 10 miles away, and they're all volunteers. I understand Mr. Thorpe said he would consider donating land for the fire department, but that doesn't take into the accounts of the expense of the building of the fire department, equipment with trucks, equipment, and volunteers. I would like to take, for y'all to take all this into consideration before making your decision. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make sure that people know that, to be transparent, that John is my brother.
He's the more handsome of the two.
He's the much more handsome. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Williford.
My name is Harvey Spur. I live at 4185 Tommy Sneed Road. That's in the Wake Electric District, which I benefit from the low rates. I'm gonna have to use my notes, probably. I was reminded, probably because it's past my bedtime, but I was reminded earlier, too, that I was in the Army, and it brought back my MOS, Military Occupation Specialty, Infantry, a really high-skilled thing. Anyway, I started with Granville Environmental Issues in 1990 when they wanted to put an incinerator on Belltown Road. Currently, you probably recognize it as the Gap. And that launched me into working with the environment here ever since. And I think we have a wonderful environment, and I think northern Granville's a green jewel and emerald, and I hope you can recognize that. But what I want to address, since I was informed that I had three minutes, and if I had three hours, I could speak to Duke...
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Spur, but there's no three-minute time limit on this legislative hearing.
Oh, okay. Then I missed my three hours where I was...
It's past my bedtime, too.
Because, you know, we could say some things. The Duke Progress Energy or whatever made a nice presentation, and we weren't really prepared to rebut that. But there are some things that could be said, but I'm not gonna focus on that. What I would like to talk to you about is it was in December 2023 that the planning board was given the issue of looking into solar farms. And ever since then, for 20 months until August 2025, when they made a decision, they worked on the issue, and they worked on it by having various programs under the leadership and direction of our planning director, Barry Baker, who we're very fortunate to have. I hope you appreciate how good he is. I know he's sitting here listening to me, but I worry about when he retires. I hope there's another person, I don't know, that can do what he does for the county. And he took this issue to heart, and over these 20 months, the planning board was subjected or given the opportunity to hear various people who have expertise and to hear about various laws, various situations related to solar panels and solar issues. And a lot of the questions raised here tonight would have been answered had you been present for all of that information. Now, I was privileged to sit in the audience and hear most of it, so I know that they were fed a lot of information and spent a lot of time in discussion and asked a lot of questions. So when it came to the time to make the decision, we're not talking about uninformed planning board members, and I hadn't said anything about your planning board members, but you appointed them, and knowing other county planning boards a little bit, I think you can be very proud of your appointees because they've served you very well, they're very dedicated, and not getting paid near what they deserve. So what they did then was to finally come to a vote, and they voted, after all of this consideration, no for this project. And you gotta remember that's this project, and there are rumors that there are two others waiting in the wings, listening to this project. And if you look around you, go to Vance County, where they have 15 solar farms, and a lot of people there wish they didn't have any, and I could go on about that. But anyway, your planning board gave a lot of effort and a lot of time to this study, and then they made a decision. And you know what the decision is, and they passed it on to you. And now it's your turn. You have to make the decision. And I'm gonna say, I think, having been there for a lot of it, the planning board made the right decision, and I wish you the power to do the same. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And that concludes those who signed up in opposition. And now, since everyone has spoken, does the board have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I really appreciate all the information that's been shared tonight. In light of the fact that Commissioner Jay is not here, I would like to move that we continue this legislative hearing until another date that would be convenient for everyone.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue it until Commissioner Jay can be with us and reschedule it. And public notices will be made, and everyone who spoke tonight can speak again if they want to, and they can bring a friend. And, you know, I'm sorry, yes?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Chad Essex sitting in for County Attorney Jim Ren. It may be wise to, since you're here at the public hearing tonight, to extend it to a date tonight certain so that the public is aware of that, and the new notices, I don't believe would have to be sent out if you were to do that, if we know what date that would be. I will say that under your ordinance, you're required to take action on this item within 45 days of, working days of tonight. That deadline would be January the 14th, which means your, I don't know if your meeting schedule's been set for January, but I assume your first meeting in January would be the absolute latest date that you could take action on this item.
Mr. Chair, what are our board dates in December?
I think we only have one meeting in December, and that will be on December 1st.
And then the next date would be the first Monday in January, unless that falls on... Okay. And that would be January 5th.
Mr. Chairman, I will make my motion to include December the first meeting.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue the hearing until our meeting on December the 2nd.
Mr. Chairman, would you just also clarify that the public hearing will remain open?
Yes, the public hearing will remain open. We will reconvene on December the 1st at our regular Monday night meeting. And is there any questions on the motion and the second? Hearing none, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. As have it, we will continue this until December 1st meeting. Thank you all. And now, our next item of business is appointments, and to make appointments and, or reappointments to the South Grand Water and Sew Authority, since, I want to ask... Since this involves me and Commissioner Jay is not here, who do I turn the meeting over You're that young, Jim.
You don't have to reappoint yourself. You can make the motion.
Okay. The next item of business is to make an appointment, a reappointment to South Grand Water and Sew Authority Board, and that involves me. Commissioner Jay is not here. Do I need to turn the meeting over to...
I'll just turn it over to Dr. Kozar, who's the longest-tenured member of the board.
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Kozar.
He didn't call you old. He said longest-tenured member.
The next item on our agenda is appointments, and it is to make appointments, or reappointments to the South Grand Water and Sew Authority. The authority owns and operates the water and wastewater treatment system serving southern Granville County area, including the town of Stem and Butner and the city of Cretemore. Siguasol shall engage in all functions required or committed by law, including but not limited to those powers set forth in Article 1, Chapter 126.2A of North Carolina General Statutes. Jimmy Gooch is eligible for reappointment as his current three-year term expires November 30th, 2025. By Siguasol bylaws, Granville County may reappoint its representative for another three-year term, and the appointed member will be sworn in in December 2025 Siguasol Board meeting. So Commissioner Gooch is eligible to be reappointed? And what is your pleasure?
I make the motion that we reappoint Chairman Gooch to the Siguasol Board.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner May and a second by Commissioner Williford to reappoint Commissioner Gooch to the Siguasol Board. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and so carry. So your signs worked that you had outside. They all worked out for you. Back to you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And now, our next item on our agenda is the county manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have two brief updates. The first is that we are nearing the completion of our space needs analysis, which is a process that kicked off more than a year ago when we decided not to kind of adopt a full-blown CIP, but to press pause and to dive into this analysis of our long-term space needs. I know that many of you are looking forward to those results and what it may tell us about some future capital projects to meet those needs. And so that is, will be forthcoming in the next weeks and months. Second item is sort of related to that, and that's, there was an earlier item on your agenda tonight that I just wanted to highlight, and that is the contract for the abatement and demolition of Holly School. That's also related to our capital planning, long-term capital planning, and is an important step in the right direction for that facility. Those are my only two updates for tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And thank you. And now for our county attorney's report, and we have moved item three to the county attorney's report, and that is to consider a resolution to donate a surplus passenger van to the Boys and Girls Club of North Central North Carolina.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I got this matter by default. This was David's matter, but he wasn't here tonight, and we made a change to it after it got put in the agenda packet. And you have the write-up there before you. This is a van that was bought with grant funds and served the JCPC program, and that program has been transferred, as I understand it, from a county function to the Boys and Girls Club, and this van has been used in connection with that program. Our county policy on donation of property requires, in addition to meeting statutory requirements, that the county would also offer the, any surplus property like this to other agencies in the county first. This van had always been used, as I understand it, with the JCPC program, was bought with grant funds for that program. So I think that's the reason that you have the county staff recommendation to transfer this to Boys and Girls Club without following the normal county policy. So we would ask that if you're inclined to approve this, that you also waive any noncompliance with the county's personal property disposition policy. And I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Does anyone have questions? If not, we're entertaining a motion.
I'll move that we approve the transfer of the van with proper language as that...
And waive any noncompliance with the county's personnel, personal property disposition policy?
What Mr. Ren just said.
I second motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Then we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. As have it, motion carries. Mr. Ren, do you have anything else for us tonight?
I have a matter of attorney-client privilege, and I believe Ms. Duncan and I would jointly present a couple of economic development matters.
Let me remind y'all, I didn't have my afternoon senior nap. I'm getting cranky.
Just go to sleep now.
It's past my bedtime. Okay. And now, our county commissioners, and we'll go to the less handsome Williford brother. Commissioner Rob Williford.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna have a lot of fun with that. There's much to come, Rob. Commissioner Griffin?
Don't have anything tonight, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Kozar?
No report, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Commissioner May?
I do. Ms. Wykel here.
Can you come in here, please?
Can you come out here, please?
Do you want to highlight?
So often, um, our county employees get criticized and, um, get beat up. But you know, and often deemed as being inefficient, ineffective. It's often unwarranted.
This isn't one of those times, is it?
No. So I wanna recognize you today for me bringing to you a simple issue regarding the batting cage at the soon-to-be demolished Holly School. And via an email, you exponentially approved something that, uh, and you and Drew, working together, approved this. And so we're gonna be taking the very nice batting cage screens and poles from the old Holly School and completely upgrading the South Grandwell High School, um, baseball field with it, based on requests from, uh, the school and parents. And so, you know, it's, it's, I wanna make a point out of this. We can work effectively when we apply common sense. So thanks a lot for both of you for doing that. Seems like something small, but for those in our district, it's something big, and I appreciate it.
Well, thank you for, for saying that. Yeah, Drew and I talked about that this morning when we got your, your email. That was school equipment, so, um, left on the property and it made sense to us to repurpose it for other school needs.
That's great. They should have took it when they left, shouldn't they? No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. All good. Thank you both for what you did. It's much appreciated.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Karen?
I'll go really fast. So let's not forget STEM Parade. Uh, we're gonna kick off Veterans Day this, this Saturday, two o'clock. Come early, you can get a cocoa at twelve to two for the STEM Downtown Master Plan. Uh, we're gonna be having a, um, drop-in session with cocoa and cookies for that. One of our audience members here tonight, one of our new student, uh, youth, uh, Crawford Extension, I'm here, Youth Advisory Leadership Council, how was that, right? Is a Falls Lake girls volleyball player, second from the left, I think she was. Um, so the girls Falls Lake, uh, volleyball team are the new one A champs, uh, just this, last, this weekend. State champions. So very exciting stuff for Falls Lake. Uh, on a side note with Falls Lake, I no longer substitute for them anymore. So when it comes time for budget discussions around charter schools, I'll be free to speak my mind on that topic. So, um, with that, um, I just wanna say, uh, have a good evening.
Thank you. And, uh, Commissioner, our vice chair, Commissioner Jay, I want us all to keep him in our prayers. And, uh, hopefully in the days to come, he'll be much better, hopefully better tomorrow, but definitely hope he's better within a few days. And, uh, I think we have a photo here. Yeah. Yes, and we just want to kind of highlight, uh, K-9 Kiefer and, uh, give everybody a chance to see how she, uh, how she kind of came along with the training and such. And, and, uh, you know, we know there's gonna be a lot of pain involved, but, uh, you know, hopefully our, our, her handler Sergeant Jordan will, uh, you know, make her a, a companion that will be faithful and loyal to her for the rest of, uh, for the rest of K-9 Kiefer's days here on earth. And, uh, I'd just like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Uh, we got to hear some passionate speeches and, uh, opinions and, you know, thank you all. Thank you all on both sides of this. We appreciate the presentations. And, you know, I'm very sorry that we, we had to continue this, but I felt, I think we all felt it was the best thing to do in the view of this is Commissioner Jay's district and, and this is like, I, this, I think this is the first meeting he's ever missed. And that's, uh, that says a lot for the amount of time he's been on the board. And without any further ado, we'll, we'll call for a motion to go into closed session with about a ten-minute break, five-minute break.
I make a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.